Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. The meeting is being held via Zoom conference call due to the COVID-19 crisis. Members of the public may participate by following the instructions listed on the agenda. You may also view and listen to the meeting on livestream cable TV, Granicus, and YouTube. Following roll call during summary of hearing procedure, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. We will now take roll call. Bonia here. Casey?
Here.
Caballero? Caballero? Cantrell? Cantrell? Garcia?
Here.
Lourdes Noa? Montañez?
Here.
Oliverio?
Here.
Ornelas Wise?
Here.
Torrance?
Here.
And Young?
Here.
All right, let the record reflect that as of this moment Commissioners Caballero and Cantrell are absent. If they do attend, we will inform the public. Summary of hearing procedures. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After the staff report, applicants and opponents may make a five-minute presentation. City staff will call out names of the public who identify the items they want to speak on. You may identify yourself by the raised hand feature on Zoom. Click star nine on your phone, or you may call 408-535-3505, or email planningsupportstaff@sanoseaca.gov and identify your name, phone number, and what items you'd like to speak on. As your name is called, city staff will unmute you to speak. After we confirm your audio is working, your allotted time will begin. Each speaker will have two minutes. Speakers using a translator will have four minutes. After the public testimony, the applicant and appellant may make closing remarks for an additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. Staff will unmute the speaker to respond to the commissioner. The public hearing will then be closed, and the planning commission will take action on the item. The planning commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Planning commission's actions on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protest to the city council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The planning commission's actions on conditional use permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with section 220.100.220 of the municipal code. With that, we'll now go to item one, called Order Orders of the Day. All right, item two, public comment. And this is public comment only for items that are not on the agenda. Again, let me repeat, only for items that are not on the agenda. Staff, do we have any public comment? Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. The meeting is being held via Zoom conference call due to the COVID-19 crisis. Members of the public may participate by following the instructions listed on the agenda. You may also view and listen to the meeting on livestream cable TV, Granicus, and YouTube. Following roll call during summary of hearing procedure, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. We will now take roll call. Bonia here. Casey?
Here.
Caballero? Caballero? Cantrell? Cantrell? Garcia?
Here.
Lourdes Noa?
Here.
Montañez?
Here.
Oliverio?
Here.
Ornelas Wise?
Here.
Torrance?
Here.
And Young?
Here.
All right, let the record reflect that as of this moment Commissioners Caballero and Cantrell are absent. If they do attend, we will inform the public. Summary of hearing procedures. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After the staff report, applicants and opponents may make a five-minute presentation. City staff will call out names of the public who identify the items they want to speak on. You may identify yourself by the raised hand feature on Zoom. Click star nine on your phone, or you may call 408-535-3505, or email and identify your name, phone number, and what items you'd like to speak on. As your name is called, city staff will unmute you to speak. After we confirm your audio is working, your allotted time will begin. Each speaker will have two minutes. Speakers using a translator will have four minutes. After the public testimony, the applicant and appellant may make closing remarks for an additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. Staff will unmute the speaker to respond to the commissioner. The public hearing will then be closed, and the planning commission will take action on the item. The planning commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Planning commission's actions on rezonings, pre-zonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protest to the city council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The planning commission's actions on conditional use permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with section 220.100.220 of the municipal code. With that, we'll now go to item one, called Order Orders of the Day. All right, item two, public comment. And this is public comment only for items that are not on the agenda. Again, let me repeat, only for items that are not on the agenda. Staff, do we have any public comment?
I'm seeing a few hands, Chair.
Okay, so let's confirm that these are for items not on the agenda. All right, can we begin public comment? Am I live?
Thank you. Hi, this is Jill Borders. I'm a District 10 resident, and I was at this meeting last two weeks ago. I'm here again to ask you to consider denying the project that will come before you on June 8th. It's known as the Gushwind Residence Project. This has been going on since March of 2017, and I'm very, very hopeful that after you look through all the documents and you consider the early denial letter and the fact that inside of that denial letter discusses the wildlife corridor issue and why they wanted to deny it then and how now that has not been solved for, that would be my number one. It's quite blatantly obvious that they haven't solved for that issue. So I'd like you to take that into consideration as you move forward. I also want to let you know that I have emailed the Environmental Services Department and not yet gotten a response. I emailed about a week ago. I anticipate everyone is just so busy and understaffed, so I'll try again. But it's in regards to the question of all electrification in our new developments. Any new residents that we have, we want to be built with electrification. And yet, this particular proposal is saying that they will put a propane tank on the property, and that is the energy source they will use. And so I am hopeful that that will be something that will be discussed in whether or not we are willing to have a propane tank on this open hillside. And if that's a good idea or not, considering that the entire city has moved forward with all new buildings being electrified. The next question I have is I really hope that you will consider the fact that this particular person has a 1,400-foot driveway that'll go up along this hill if it's passed. And I have a question. It's 4,400-square-foot home with a 1,400-square-foot driveway. It sounds more like a hotel to me, a really nice Airbnb. Are we going to allow an Airbnb on an open hillside? Are we going to allow that person to run it that way and have 15 cars along that driveway? I have real serious concerns about the wildlife. And last, please look into this. It had a general planned open space, open space parklands designation, and now they're telling me that was an error. So confusion.
All right, before we go on to the next public comment, Commissioner Caballero is stuck as an attendee. We need to convert her over as a panelist. Can we go ahead and make that happen? There she is. Perfect. Thank you. All right, next public comment.
Andrew should be unmuted.
Hello, yeah, this is Andrew Machota. I spoke last time as well, as well as Jill Boarder regarding the conditional use permit CP17-010, which will come before the commission on June 8th. I just wanted to kind of point out some issues in addition to the environmental concerns. San Jose Municipal Ordinance Title 20 says the planning commission may give you a conditional use permit only after finding that the permit is consistent with the general plan and with further the policies of the general plan, which this permit will not. It also states the conditional use permit can only be approved if the proposal will not adversely affect the peace, health, safety, and welfare of the people living and working in the surroundings. Last time I talked about the septic system runoff and the runoff from the land into the community garden. Tonight, I'm going to talk about that over 85% of the neighboring residents oppose this permit. The driveway that Ms. Borders just mentioned, Inter-Santa Teresa Boulevard on a hillside with a blind spot to the south, is where Santa Teresa Boulevard goes from four lanes to lanes. So permitting the driveway here is a danger for traffic along Santa Teresa Boulevard. It will increase the odds of a vehicle-vehicle accident. The driveway is also next to the Coyote Altimos Canal, where it goes under Santa Teresa Boulevard and is acting as a wildlife underpass. Permitting the driveway would allow different animals from the underpass onto Santa Teresa Boulevard, increasing the risk of animal-vehicle accidents. The general plan in Chapter 5 limits the use of property outside the urban growth boundary to those having very little impact on the land, minimal visibility from the valley floor, and will not result in substantial direct or indirect impacts on sensitive habitat areas. Even the owner of the property admits this house will be visible from the valley floor. And the general plan also impacts the wildlife. I also kind of want to point out that in Chapter 6, it states that properties with slopes greater than 30% are typically ridge lines and need special protection. If my trigonometry is correct, where the house is going to be built is over 30%.
Next speaker, please.
Dave should be able to speak.
Good evening. Dave Pochell, resident of San Jose. I too want to alert you to the concerns about the project on the ridge that forms the northern border of Coyote Valley that will be before you at your next meeting. Please take a close look at the letters you will receive from the environmental organizations, the expert biological opinion from Pathways for Wildlife, the legal opinion from Barg Kaufman explaining why CEQA requires an EIR for this project. So what's the big deal about just one house? Let me explain. Since the initial study does not, which is why we need a deeper assessment, it could have a significant environmental impact on the entire region. Pathways for Wildlife, the research consultants used by the Santa Clara Valley Open Space Authority to study wildlife movement in and around Coyote Valley, has identified this very specific site as critical for the wildlife linkage between the large habitats of the Diablo Range and the Santa Cruz Mountains needed to maintain genetic diversity of the wildlife populations. For example, studies show that the existence of mountain lions in the Santa Cruz Mountains is already threatened by health issues due to inbreeding. So what's the impact of one house? Picture an hourglass with the top and bottom chambers as these large habitats. This site is that pinch point in the middle. If you clog it, you lose the flow, and hence the whole functioning of the hourglass is lost. They identified only two wildlife passages available to cross Santa Teresa Boulevard, and one is the covert at the canal at this site. Have you ever seen a mountain lion in person? Like me, probably not. But if you've hiked our hills, they've seen, heard, and smelled you. They avoid human contact and activity, including cars, lights, and noise. I'm not asking that you take my word. I'm asking that you require EIR levels of study as CEQA requires, but that the NMD fails to provide. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, with that, do we have any more public comment, Yan?
My name is Donna Euan. I'm from the Baker West Neighborhood Association. I have major concerns about the traffic gridlock that will be created by the El Paso project.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm going to have to stop you there. This is public comment only for items not on the agenda. You will have an opportunity to comment when that item comes up on the agenda. So my apologies for that. Okay, Yan, do we have any other public comment? Right, seeing none, I will then go ahead, close public comment, and now move on to item three, deferrals and removals from calendar. Staff, are we still consistent? Nothing to defer, nothing to remove? Is that still stock it?
That is correct. Nothing to defer or remove.
All right, perfect. We'll go ahead and move on to item four, the consent calendar. You got a motion on the floor to approve items A, B, and C as a package?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
All right, motion to approve. Motion made by Commissioner Torrance. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oliverio. I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Bonia, I will abstain. I was absent for that meeting. Casey?
Yes.
Caballero?
Yes.
Cantrell? Still absent. Okay, Garcia?
Yes.
Lourdes Noa?
Yes.
Oliverio?
Yes.
Ornelas Wise?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
All right, with that, the motion passes with Bonia abstaining and Cantrell being absent.
Chair, a quick question. Was that on the entire consent calendar or just item 3A?
The entire consent calendar.
There were a couple of hands up, so I don't know if you wanted to entertain if there were any items that were going to get pulled.
Yeah, no, they're not. We're moving. We approved the entire consent calendar. All right, with that, we are now at the public hearing. Staff, tell me when you're ready for me to start. Okay, so we'll go ahead and begin public hearing. Item 5A, PDC19-049 and PD20-006. Staff, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Alacatienza Planning, the Department of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. Let me just pull my slides up quick. Can everybody see my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go full screen. Again, Alacatienza, I have with me Maire Blanco. We're both from the Planning Division. Good evening, everybody. Before you this evening is the El Paso and 1777 Saratoga Avenue Mixed Use Signature Project. Just as a little bit of context, I'm going to go over the location. So this site is located on both the north and southeast sides of the intersection of Saratoga Avenue, Lawrence Expressway, and Kido Road. It consists of the partial redevelopment of a portion of the El Paso de Saratoga Shopping Center, as well as the complete redevelopment of the buildings located at 1777 Saratoga Avenue. In terms of the project components, so this product includes a rezoning from both the CG Commercial General and CP Commercial Pedestrian Zoning Districts to a CG Plan Development Zoning District. That rezoning would support an associated plan development permit, which would allow the demolition of approximately 126,000 square feet of existing commercial space and the removal of 120 trees. That would facilitate the construction of four mixed-use buildings. That includes 994 residential units, approximately 165,000 square feet of commercial space, 3.5 acres of publicly accessible open space, including 1.1-acre public park. Additionally, the project includes a conditional use permit and determination of public convenience and necessity for off-sale alcohol at a future grocery store within Building 3. And then lastly, the project includes extended construction hours from between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m. over a 15-day period, which would allow concrete pores for the construction of the subterranean parking garage. In terms of the project review, this project was initially submitted in December of 2019, and it was reviewed for consistency with the general plan.
Right. Seeing none, I will then go ahead, close public comment and now move on to item three, deferrals and removals from calendar. Staff, are we still consistent? Nothing to defer, nothing to remove? Is that still stock it?
That is correct. Nothing to defer or remove.
All right, perfect. We'll go ahead and move on to item four, the consent calendar. Uh, you got a motion on the floor to approve items A, B and C as a package?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
All right, motion to approve, uh, motion made by Commissioner Torrance. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oliverio. I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Uh, Bonia, I will abstain. I was absent, uh, for that meeting. Casey?
Yes.
Caballero?
Yes.
Uh, Cantrell? Still absent. Okay, Garcia?
Yes.
Lourdes Noa?
Yes.
Montañez?
Yes.
Oliverio?
Yes.
Cornellas Wise?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
All right, with that, the motion passes with Bonia abstaining and, uh, Cantrell being absent.
Uh, Chair, a quick question. Was that on the entire consent calendar or just item three A?
Uh, uh, the entire consent calendar.
There were a couple of hands up, so I don't know if you wanted to entertain if there were any items that were going to get pulled.
Yeah, no, they're, they're not. We're moving, uh, we approved the entire consent calendar. All right, with that. We are now at the public hearing. Staff, tell me when you're ready for me to start. Okay, so we'll go ahead and begin public hearing, item five A. PC, PDC nineteen dash oh four nine and PD twenty dash oh oh six. Staff, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Alec Atienza, uh, Planning, the Department of Planning, Building and Code Enforcement. Let me just pull my slides up quick. Can everybody see my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go full screen. Again, Alec Atienza, I have with me Myra Blanco. We're both from the Planning Division. Good evening, everybody. Uh, before you this evening is the El Paso and seventeen seventy-seven Saratoga Avenue Mixed Use Signature Project. Just as a little bit of context, I'm going to go over the location. So. This site is located on both the north and southeast sides of the intersection of Saratoga Avenue, Lawrence Expressway and Kido Road. It consists of the partial redevelopment of a portion of the El Paso de Saratoga Shopping Center. As well as the complete redevelopment of the buildings located at seventeen seventy-seven Saratoga Avenue. In terms of the project components, so this product includes a rezoning from both the CG Commercial General. And CP Commercial Pedestrian Zoning Districts to a CG Plan Development Zoning District. Uh, that rezoning would support an associated plan development permit. Which would allow the demolition of approximately one hundred twenty-six thousand square feet of existing commercial space and the removal of a hundred and twenty trees. That would facilitate the construction of four mixed-use buildings. That includes nine hundred ninety-four residential units, approximately a hundred sixty-five thousand square feet of commercial space. Three point five acres of publicly accessible open space, including one point one acre public park. Additionally, the project includes a conditional use term, conditional use permit. And determination of public convenience and necessity for off-sale alcohol at a future grocery store within building three. And then lastly, the project includes extended construction hours from. Between six and nine AM over a fifteen day period, which would allow concrete pores for the construction of the subterranean parking garage. In terms of the project review, uh, this product was initially submitted in December of twenty nineteen. And it was reviewed for consistency with the general plan, uh, more specifically the signature project policy, which is policy IP five point one oh. Uh, that signature project policy allows housing projects to proceed ahead of the preparation of an urban village plan if it meets the criteria of that policy. Uh, so this subject site is located within the El Paso de Saratoga Urban Village. Uh, it has a land use designation of both the neighborhood community commercial and regional commercial. The project provides its fair share of jobs and housing within the urban village. It's located at a highly visible intersection, intersection of Saratoga, Lawrence and Kido. Uh, and it incorporates both public and publicly accessible open space. Um, additionally, the project included extensive public outreach, both among the city as well as the developer. Uh, and in addition to the signature project policy, one of the key components that I mentioned previously is that the project includes a plan development zoning district. Uh, to support the development of the signature project. So this plan development zoning district includes specifically tailored development standards, which include height setback, level of density, as well as building configurations. Uh, in addition, the zoning district would allow for the administrative permitted special and conditional uses of the urban village zoning district. Which aligns with the signature project criteria. Uh, lastly, the project was also reviewed for consistency with the applicable. Additional applicable provisions of the municipal zoning code, as well as the residential design guidelines. City Council Policy six dash thirty for public outreach. As well as the California Environmental Quality Act. And to discuss that key component, Sequo, I have Myra Blanco here. Myra, take it away.
Thank you, Alec. Good evening, Commissioners, members of the public, city staff. Uh, my name is Myra Blanco and I am the Environmental Project Manager with the City of San Jose here to. Um, provide information regarding the environmental review for the subject project. The City of San Jose prepared an environmental impact report for the thirteen twelve and seventeen seventy-seven Saratoga Avenue Mixed Use Village Project. In compliance with the requirements of Sequa and the Sequa statutes and guidelines. The first step in the preparation of an EIR is publication of a notice of preparation or NOP. The NOP for this project was publicly circulated for thirty days from September twenty-eight, twenty twenty. To October twenty-seven, twenty twenty, in accordance with section one five zero eight two of the Sequa Guidelines. The NOP provided a general description of the proposed project and identified possible. Environmental impacts that could result from implementation of the project. The City of San Jose also held a public scoping meeting on October fifth, twenty twenty, to discuss the project. And solicit public input as to the scope and contents of the EIR. Comments received during the NOP circulation period were considered in the preparation of the draft environmental impact report. Once the draft was completed, a notice of completion and notice of availability were filed electronically. With the State's Office of Planning and Research. The notice of availability or NOA of the draft EIR was published on October fifteen, twenty twenty-one. And that started a forty-five day public circulation period. From October fifteen, twenty twenty-one through November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. The NOA was publicized by filing it with the County Reporter's Office and the State Clearing House. Publishing it on the San Jose Post Record and Mercury News. Posting it on the city's environmental review page. And the city's news flash page and emailing it to interested parties from the current notification list and. The NOP commenters list above and beyond Sequa's notification requirements set forth in section one five zero eight seven in the Sequa Statute and Guidelines. Two project options, that is the education mixed-use option and non-education mixed-use option were analyzed in the EIR. The non-education mixed-use option is the applicant's preferred project. As reflected in the PD zoning and the PD permit before you this evening. The EIR did not identify significant and unavoidable impacts under either project. But the EIR did identify significant impacts to air quality, biological resources, hazardous materials. Noise and transportation traffic. These impacts would be reduced to a less than significant level with identified mitigation measures. The impacts as well as the mitigation measures are outlined in the associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program. That is also part of the hearing documents packet. Um, during the forty-five day public review and comment period, staff received more than seventy comments on the draft EIR. Many of the comments received during the public circulation period raised similar concerns and questions. So topic responses were prepared. As part of the First Amendment to respond to these, um, topics globally. The topic responses address vehicle miles traveled, which is the sequin metric for transportation impacts. The prob, the project's obligations regarding below-market housing. Impacts to utilities, parking, schools, aesthetics and visual impacts, as well as general plan consistency, project density and scale. The First Amendment to the draft EIR was posted to the city's active EIR project website on May sixth, twenty twenty-two. Which is consistent with section one five zero eight eight of the Sequa Statutes and Guidelines, which states that. The lead agency provide a response at least ten days prior to the cert, prior to the certification of the environmental impact report. All commenters were sent a notice of the First Amendment's availability via email. Following its publication, staff issued an errata memo. Which outlines minor revisions and additions to the transportation traffic mitigation measure. The errata memo was provided with the hearing documents and made available to all commenters on the project's environmental review page. As part of the EIR process, um, alternatives were identified to the proposed project, a total of six. Alternatives were considered and three were evaluated further. Um, as stated earlier, staff responded to the comments and questions within the First Amendment. And none of the comments raised represent new significant information. That would warrant recirculation of the draft EIR pursuant to Sequa Guidelines, section one five zero eight eight point five. Therefore, the First Amendment, together with the draft environmental impact report. Constitute the final environmental impact report for the, uh, El Paso seventeen seven. Saratoga Avenue Mixed Use Village Project. Um, this concludes the presentation for the environmental review.
Thank you for that. Do we have more staffers? That's just the environmental review presentation?
That was just the environmental review. I, I'll just add my last little piece here, um, just the staff recommendation, but that's it. I believe Eric is here to provide the presentation. I'll stop sharing my screen.
Okay, so that concludes your presentation?
Yes.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, now we will, uh, give the floor to the applicant.
Yan, can you move over Eric Shane Hour, Allison Ku and Ken Rodriguez, please?
Right now, all eyes are on you, Alec. Literally.
Yeah. This is Eric. None of our, none of our group was promoted till now. So, uh, give us one second. Allison is starting the presentation. And so if we can share a screen with Allison when she comes up.
What was the third name there?
Ken Rodriguez. Allison Ku and Ken Rodriguez. I see Allison is on. And I see Ken. So if we can share a screen with Allison, she'll be, uh, moving the slides for us. Please.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
All right. Ready?
Are you ready on our side?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, my name is Allison Ku and I represent the ownership of El Paso. We're a locally based company that looks to approach projects with a long-term perspective in mind, hence our focus. On quality and, uh, close community relationships. Thank you Chair Bonia and Vice Chair Casey, as well as the fellow commission members tonight. And thank you to staff for the hard work in getting us to this point. And finally, thank you to the community members for attending and providing valuable feedback at the over forty meetings we've had in the last three years. That input has played a large role in helping design and refine the project. Including the elimination completely of the school educational use, including a hundred percent publicly accessible park. Protecting, preserving and enhancing a landscape burn. That will serve as a buffer to our neighbors and securing a grocery anchor for the project, Whole Foods. We're extremely proud of the project that we're presenting tonight and look forward to delivering the new community gathering place for D one in the west side.
And good evening. I'm Eric Shane Hour, land use consultant to the project. These are the key features of the design. Number one, the project meets or exceeds all signature project requirements. In the Envision twenty forty general plan, including commercial job space, high, high residential density, adequate publicly accessible open space. Extensive community engagement and high-quality architecture, landscape and site design. Two, we will buy, we will expand commercial space by creating a total of one hundred and sixty-five thousand square feet of commercial space. A Whole Foods grocery store will anchor the central main street that will include both retail and office space. Third, the project will construct a hundred and fifty units of affordable housing onsite. In addition to the hundred, the eight hundred and forty-four market rate units. Fourth, the project includes a total of three point five acres of publicly accessible outdoor space. Including a one point one acre public park and two point four acres of pedestrian paseos. Urban plazas and outdoor dining along the main street. And finally, fifth, we will construct new wider sidewalks, crosswalks and bike lanes to promote walking and biking instead of car travel. The project is reducing parking by six point one percent. And all parking is hidden from view, either underground or within structures. I'll now hand it to our lead architect, Ken Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Ken Rodriguez and, uh, I'm going to walk through the site plan very quickly. Um, and not only are we providing this new project that both Allison and, and Eric just talked about. We're also enhancing a pedestrian promenade, new pedestrian promenade in front of the existing shops. Uh, AMC, REI and such. This will be running from, uh, West Campbell Avenue. Um, Westerly along the entire face of those shops. We have eliminated some parking, created new walkways, benches. And landscape features that will tie into the project right at REI. And then as a continuation of that promenade, we are creating a new main street within the project that. Um, runs both east and west, north and south. The north and south connection hook up to Saratoga. And the south direction hooks up to a new public park that will be located down in the left-hand side of this site plan. Uh, at Kido Road. Let's go to the next slide if we could, please. Um, this is a rendering, uh, of Main Street, the connection right after, um, uh, REI. So it's facing from REI looking west into the project. As you can see, we've created a lot of outdoor, uh, character, outdoor dining. Retail shops that line the main street. Uh, these, this, uh, this particular main street is really oriented to pedestrians and bicycles. As well as, uh, community functions that will happen here. Um, our anchor, uh, grocery store, Whole Foods will be using this a few times a year to promote, uh, outdoor, um. Uh, sales activities and, uh, community gathering and functions. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is a view looking at Whole Foods with their outdoor dining area that will be located all along Main Street. Um, outdoor seating, table, action, um, and then entrances to the building would be located here. You can see the residential, uh, projects up above, which are stepped back from, uh, the main street architecture. With its, uh, unique lighting. And pedestrian bicycle connections, uh, all along the main street area. Next slide. So this slide is at the elbow of Main Street. If you were to walk to the left on this slide, you would walk directly into the new, uh, public park. If you were to walk to the right, you'll get to the north connection that connects up to Saratoga. As you can see in the foreground, uh, again, unique outdoor table seating gathering spots for different retail tenants that line the entire ground floor of this project. It is very commercial, retail oriented, um, and the only thing that touches the ground besides, or the, uh, that are on the ground floor besides the, uh. Uh, uh, retail restaurant use are the lobbies that are entering into the residential towers above, which you can see. Uh, up on the second level with deep recessed, uh, decks, uh, landscaping that tears down from, uh, uh, some of those decks. Uh, di, unique architecture in terms of sandblasted concrete material, clear glass, balconies. Uh, a project that really orients itself down to the public, uh, uh, main street and back up to, uh, the decks and, and to the.
Mr. Rodriguez, th- a- a- and thank you for that. That, that'll, that concludes the initial five minutes for the applicant. Uh, I will then go ahead now and, no, no, of course, and, and I will now go ahead and open up the public comment. I want to make sure that everyone is heard and I also want to give the commission time. To deliberate, so I will limit public comment to one minute. Uh, with that, go ahead Yan and start public comment. And, and, and Yan, if we can keep time, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. The organization Catalyze can unmute themselves?
Waiting for you to switch the public comment time. Good evening. My name is Alex Shore. I'm the Executive Director of Catalyze SV. Our members have been involved in this project for a long time and have some good feedback. For you on how to make this project as good as possible. Hoping it gets approved by the planning commission tonight with potentially some improvements that our members have suggested. You're going to hear a lot of comment tonight about the EIR and this project's impact on the city. I would suggest that if we as a community really truly care about the environment, we would build projects using sustainable materials. That are more energy efficient by being taller. With as little parking as possible, emphasizing walking, biking and public transit and with lots of green space. That's what our members really care about and will be talking about. So as playing commissioners, I hope you'll keep your eye on the prize of what it means to truly build sustainable development for everyone.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Amy, you should be able to speak.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Chair Vanilla and Planning Commission Members, my name is Amy Cody and I'm President of the Moreland West Neighborhood Association. The project is, is of great concern to our community due to its traffic impacts and the nearly. Two thousand new residents who may seek out the bits of green space surrounding Moreland Middle School, which is the closest thing we have to a park. We reached out to the developer nearly three years ago. We've reviewed proposals, provided input and organized two special meetings. To help our neighbors stay informed through project changes. It's been a challenge. There are long periods when we were told to wait for the new proposal or wait for the response to comments on the DEIR. For many months, we couldn't refer neighbors to the city's website because the project summary, photo and project manager information were outdated. Project presentations have not been adequate. At the community meeting held this past January, the developer showed a single building elevation, the shortest one. And left out elevations for the three tallest buildings. We've repeatedly requested for visual, for visuals that show all four buildings, but I've not seen this. And finally, sign.
Mark, Mark, you can go ahead and speak.
Yeah, this is Mark Grimsy. Thank you very much. My wife and I are longtime residents of Baker West. And we are within five hundred feet of this proposal. Um, we believe that the traffic mitigations are insufficient for the nine hundred plus residential units and over twenty-two hundred residents. Um, we don't, we, we do not consider San Jose transportation infrastructure, other projects within one mile of this as part of this. We believe that the mitigations, the traffic calming, only half of that would be reached. And the other ha, would be reached toward the target. The other half would be for non-enforceable behaviors. We believe that the planning commission should return this project back to the developer recommendations to reduce density, building height. So the traffic mitigations are truly possible and not based on human behaviors. We also understand that the multi, uh, multimodal transportation improvement plan for West San Jose is, does not include this project.
John, you can go ahead.
My name is John Overstar. I'm a resident Baker West adjacent to the site.
And I'm concerned about the quality or validity of the traffic analysis supporting the project. For instance, the report contained a factual error on the status of the metering lights on the Saratoga North eighty five ramp. It also states that out of one thousand one hundred residences, there will only be two hundred and nineteen new outbound trips at the peak AM commute hour. If you assume one and a half residents per unit, that means fifteen percent commute at the peak AM hour. Or if you use the number the city quoted, twenty two sixty three, only ten percent of the residents are commuting out in the peak AM hour. Furthermore, the DEIR response stated that out of those two hundred and nineteen trips. Only one would use the Saratoga ramp at northbound eighty five. I found this highly questionable and raised it with the city and was told that the report assumes northbound eighty five entrance ramp would be used. Which was not in the scope of the analysis and is further away.
Mike, you can go ahead.
This is Mike Thompson, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Talk about the El Paso Phase One Talking Point One that we have Moreland West has sent to you. The average, I looked at the average salaries for the cashiers and checkers of Safeway, Nob Hill, Whole Foods and Costco. And their annual salary is about thirty four thousand dollars. The mail carrier and McDonald's in the nearby area, their annual salary is thirty eight thousand dollars. The rental for a two bedroom apartment is about thirty one thousand dollars per year. So I'm recommending that the fifteen percent of the affordable projects be set at the fifty percent AMI. So that all the Costco clerks, handlers and whatnot can afford to live in the project. And also the commercial property a hundred and ninety five thousand does not. Comply with the urban village guidelines intentions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, my name is Barbara Gaylord and I'm a resident of the Baker West Neighborhood. I'm here to ask that you look at comprehensive plan of the entire thirty acre site. Not just the ten point seven acre piece of the Phase One El Paso plan. The San Jose twenty forty general plan updated on December twenty one and amended in March of twenty two. Targets nine hundred and nineteen dwelling units from the entire El Paso urban village. The current Phase One is calling for nine hundred and ninety four dwelling units on just this ten point seven acres of the village. So the Phase One plan meets the housing unit target for the entire urban village on just ten percent of the village acreage. And on only one third of the thirty acre El Paso shopping center site. We believe the residential density at ninety two dwelling units per acre is too high. I request that the number of resident units be significantly reduced while maintaining the one hundred and forty nine units of affordable housing. I would also like the city to share the personal targets of the remaining.
Juan, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, I'm Luanne Abrahams from the Moreland West Neighborhood. From the outset, the neighbors have expressed our concerns about the high project density, building heights, neighborhood compatibility. Traffic impact, school impact, the lack of affordable housing in our area. And while the developers did meet with us many times, we were shown an array of shifting projects. We did not see our actual concerns addressed and none of the major concerns have been addressed at all. And what we are left with is a project that will set the tone for future development in this underdeveloped area. With a forest of towers ranging up to eleven and twelve stories of height, which is completely out of scale. We are concerned about affordable housing and we want to have those affordable units. However, this project maximizes the number of market rate units while doing only the minimum percentage of affordable housing.
Thank you, Luanne, Gary, you can go ahead.
We can't hear you, Gary, you're on mute.
Thank you. It's Gary Cunningham, Moreland West Neighborhood Association. We do not believe the El Paso Phase One proposal meets council policy to promote job growth. To fix San Jose's job and housing imbalance and will continue to contribute to a rising city operating services budget. The densities for residential units and commercial and office space do not compare well to the fifty acre site. Valco and Cupertino, nor to the way comparable ten acre approved San Jose project. Stevens Creek Promenade, which is on the forty three hundred block of Stevens Creek. El Paso Phase One residential density is approximately two times higher than Valco. And approximately one point five times higher than Stevens Creek Promenade. El Paso Phase One commercial space density is approximately three times lower than Valco. And approximately two times lower than Stevens Creek Promenade. We do not believe the El Paso Phase One proposal is the best for the city in terms of addressing revenue.
Bob, you can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening, my name is Bob Levy, I'm a D one resident and former San Jose planning commissioner and parks commissioner. I strongly recommend that this project be sent back to the drawing board. The project is far, far too dense for the area. This kind of development is appropriate for downtown or transit rich area. The site is served by two bus routes with stops every fifteen and thirty minutes. This project is an auto oriented development with no transit options. Placing eleven and twelve story buildings in an area predominantly one and two story buildings is inappropriate. The neighborhood appreciates the need for housing and they're interested in a project with six and eight story buildings, not eleven and twelve. The project does not rise to the level of being an exceptional signature project. Based on the city's pro, a policy providing three acres of parkland for every thousand residents. The project should be providing six acres of parkland, not immediately one point two. There's virtually no recreational attributes in the project. And the Baker West Neighborhood, which is adjacent, has not a single park, this makes that situation far worse.
Roberto, you can go ahead.
Hello, thank you, my name is Roberta Witty, I live in English Estates, which is very close by. We do not believe the proposed new structure of the El Paso Phase One are consistent with, are complementary to the surrounding neighborhood fabric. As required by community development policy C D four point nine. For reference, some large structures nearby, the four story Apple headquarters in Cupertino, the seven story Kaiser Hospital in Lawrence. The eight story residence at Santana Row and newly developed seven and eight story buildings. At the Stevens Creek Promenade project in San Jose. Baker West and Moreland West Neighborhood Associations have been in support of site development. But have repeatedly expressed concerns about the size and heights of the buildings. I in English Estates also support it, I live in an area with a nursing home and a two story apartment building. El Paso Phase One plans have not adequately considered the resident input on building heights and densities, do not well adjust it.
Matt, you can go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Bonilla Commissioners, my name is Matt Regan with the Bay Area Council. We represent about three hundred of the region's largest employers. We are in full support of this project, we've reviewed it, it meets all the requirements of smart growth, dense infill, transit oriented development. I would point you to Lathrop in, in the Central Valley where there's the largest development in the state currently twelve thousand single family homes. And there's a billboard on the freeway next to that development that says a short commute to Silicon Valley. That's, development is possible because we are not building infill housing next to jobs in our urban cores. That is why this project and projects like it are so vital to meet our climate goals, to meet our societal goals, to meet our equity goals. This is a good project, it's not a perfect project, it will never satisfy the opponents, there has never been a project that does not have opponents. But it's a good project and we urge your support, thank you.
Sarah, you can go ahead.
Thank you, good evening, my name is Sarah Cardona, I'm the deputy director at Greenbelt Alliance, we're an environmental nonprofit. And after careful review, Greenbelt Alliance is pleased to endorse the proposed El Paso de Saratoga project. We believe this is a tremendous proposal, it would represent nine hundred and ninety four new units, one hundred and forty nine of which are designated below market rate. And located on site by incorporating three point five acres of open space, community retail, much needed housing. This is truly a vibrant mixed use town center with community gathering spaces where employees, residents, guests. A lot of people can comfortably and safely enjoy and walk within the project. We believe this would play a pivotal role in reimagining a more resilient and inclusive San Jose for all residents to enjoy. And we're proud to give this project our endorsement, we hope its approval tonight will inspire cities around the Bay Area to redouble their efforts to grow smartly. Thank you.
Lala, you can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening, planning commissioners, my name is Lalo Mendes and I'm the project development specialist for Catalyze SV. I'm here towards the supportive of our members for this bicycle and pedestrian oriented project. We scored this project in twenty twenty and later in twenty twenty one. And so, one of the things that our members really want to highlight was the community engagement. This is an applicant who's been engaged from the very beginning and who's been receptive to our member feedback. Four recommendations to make this an even better project, we, our members recommended the inclusion of more bicycle slots with thousands of new residents. We believe that a one to one parking ratio is adequate, this to connect the residents to larger transit options. A second, to provide a transit passes to incentivize the residents to use those alternative modes of transportation. And third is to increase the number of electrical vehicle charging stations, this is imperative as we move forward. And lastly, the project meets LED sustainability standards. However, our members want to see a much, much aggressive approach and see the project pursue LED, gold or even platinum, so hopefully you take our.
And you can go ahead.
I'm Paul, I'm a resident of Moreland West Neighborhood. According to the plan of the Al Paso said, there are one point seven acre of publicly accessible open space around the buildings. Is where people gather, but it includes the travel lanes of the main street section along with about the thirty plus of parking spot. I question if this is an appropriate definition of a publicly accessible open space. It also includes outdoor seedings for restaurants and I question how publicly accessible that is. This area is no forest, a lack of public parks, our neighborhood has no park. On page seventy seven of the first amendment to the DEIR responsive comments. It says that the project would generate two thousand four hundred sixty three new residents. Reading the San Jose Park impact, the audience, my understanding is that the. Three thousand plus resident would require six acre of parkland. The current plan of three point five acres of also private and the public open space and the park felt well.
Ron, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, Ron Coons from Baker West. El Paso Phase One building heights and densities have been raised as major resident concern since the earliest meetings with developers. These were acknowledged as areas of no controversy in the draft impact report. Despite these resident concerns, the building heights and densities have increased. Due to development plan changes, the project's commercial space decreased from four hundred thousand square feet to one hundred and sixty five square feet. However, despite the decrease in project commercial space, the three shortest buildings have increased from. Seven, seven and nine stories to nine, ten and a half and eleven stories. And the number of residents increased from seven forty one units to nine ninety four units. Thank you.
Donna, please unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm Donna Ewan from Baker West. The traffic mitigations are not sufficient for nine hundred and ninety four residential units for the El Paso site. And do not consider the eight hundred and seventy six additional cars for the Costco warehouse project that they'll have. There are also developments at the Kito Village project at Saratoga Avenue in Cox. And a possible ten story residential development at Lawrence Expressway and Prospect Avenue. All of these developments are within one mile of the El Paso Phase One. I have a concern about the validity of the traffic analysis report, as John Orbester mentioned. Which says that during peak AM hours, there'll be two hundred and nineteen new outbound trips by residents. Which means assuming there's only one or one point five residents per unit, only a fourteen to twenty percent of residents will be commuting at peak hours. We find these traffic numbers to be highly unlikely and we request prior to rezoning and permit approval. That the city of San Jose collaborate with the city of Saratoga, Santa Clara County and regional transit authorities to perform an independent transit study. And consider all the other developments.
Gary, please unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, honorable planning commissioners, Gary Smith, representative of the English Estates Neighborhood. Just north of Prospect High School. And I would like to reiterate the prior speakers' points about the, well, the Saratoga Corners. Which is, which is a mixed use residential within the triangle of where the seventeen seventy seven El Paso project. So this is phase one and planning commissioners, I ask you to utilize your strength, utilize your power. This, this coalition, we're only asking you to, what, limit the building heights to eight stories or throughout the whole project. That will reduce the, the number of units, yes, the housing units. But okay, let's increase the number of affordable housing units, but let's consider the whole thing. The Saratoga potential with their new housing development and the Costco, please plan.
Alex, please unmute yourself.
Hello, planning commission, my name is Alex Melendez, I am the organizing manager at G M B Action, I cover the South Bay chapter. Yesterday, I was at the city council where the city of San Jose designated May as affordable housing month. And I can't think of another project that kind of exemplifies the opportunity to create much needed affordable homes. It has nine hundred and ninety four homes, it's going to have one hundred and forty nine deed restricted affordable housing. It's going to be a climate friendly proposal and I really think if the city of San Jose wants to live up to its expectation of. Creating an abundant housing situation for San Jose and inclusive San Jose, this is an exemplary project. We heard a lot of concerns earlier, but what I heard was just delay, delay, delay. You're not going to get those badly needed homes if you delay or cut back the level of housing or the project as presented, please move it forward.
Alex, please unmute yourself.
Evening Chair Bonilla and fellow commissioners. My name is Holly Saferman and I'm here in part on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition. I've shared with the commissioner a formal letter of endorsement as well as letters of support from San Jose residents and members of pro housing organizations. What you'll hear tonight is that all groups who aim to address our housing crisis believe that El Paso is an incredible use of land space. Will bring nine hundred and ninety four much needed homes to this resource rich area. You've heard a lot from residents tonight who are mostly wealthy homeowners, but you also hear from a resident who is a renter. Beyond my role at HAC, I am first and foremost speaking as a San Jose resident, as a district one constituent and a neighbor of El Paso in the halfway neighborhood. I'm a renter in a rent controlled apartment and I'm speaking in enthusiastic support of El Paso. This project will create new homes with a hundred and forty nine deed restricted. My only critique of the project is that the building height should be much taller so that we can include more units for people like me. To enjoy the incredible amenities that this area of district one has to offer. Thank you so much and I urge you to support the project without any delay, thank you so much.
Stefan, please unmute yourself.
Thank you, Stephen Jameson, I'm here on behalf of Whole Foods. And I'd like to urge the planning commission to please move this forward. Whole Foods is looking for certainty in the ability to open up and to provide groceries and beverages with the seasonal events. The periodic tastings events and all the unique foods that Whole Foods is known for in this wonderful, wonderful, wonderfully designed. Project, we're excited to be there, we'd like to see it move forward as quickly as possible. The design of the project allows engagement with the community, the farmers market, periodic tastings. And to explore the new and unique beer, wines and distilled spirits. Whatever can be done to expedite the development and this, and to provide certainty so that we can know when to join this community would be greatly appreciated. And we thank you for your efforts and for your time.
Thank you.
Eric, please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Eric Deringer, I'm a resident of Baker West, I had a question at the last committee related to infrastructure. Most of related to children, I was curious if there's a plan being shared of the expected number of children that would have to go to nearby schools. And how the schools would take that new capacity. The response I was given was related to a decline in enrollment, which didn't really answer the question of whether or not the schools can have capacity to support. And if not, what the plan is to build that capacity. The second item was related to parking, I think the parking number isn't currently listed, but in the. The second item was related to parking. I think the parking number isn't currently listed, but in the past it seemed insufficient for 994 units. And what the plan was for parking overflow. The near neighborhood is not only not the closest walk for the new residents, but it doesn't seem to be an appropriate solution for overflow in the neighborhood. To become, you know, the actual solution. So what's the plan for the number of parking to support 2,000 residents? I don't think a one-to-one ratio of units, the parking spots available 24 hours is, is adequate. Yeah, for those, if we can get a response on those two questions about kid capacity and parking capacity, that we appreciate it because last time it was a non-answer.
Phil, please unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, this is Phil. I'm part of Baker West that align that it's adjacent to the berm of the development. I spoke before about the, the traffic passage to the parking garage that's on the south side that runs behind the buildings, existing buildings. Well, I'm concerned that with the density and the amount of parking that's going into that garage, it will become another thoroughfare. That hasn't been really considered in terms of maybe the traffic considerations. It's just considered, you know, just a byway. Else, as well as I share the concerns of the density, I'm excited about the project. I hope you can approve a project. That has much lower densities that, that is part of the EIR's mitigations recommendations. A lot of environmental impacts can be mitigated with lower densities and I hope you look at that as a, a, a solution you can approve. Thank you.
Catherine, please unmute yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine Hedges. I'm a member of Catalyze SV. And I'm speaking in strong support of the Alpasado Saratoga project. It accomplishes the stated goals of the city of San Jose and way very few other projects do. It will activate the, and enhance the strip mall and parking lot with nearly a thousand new homes, including 149 affordable homes for San Jose residents like me need the most. You know, the city of San Jose has a housing crisis, a displacement crisis and affordability crisis. It's all, we need high-density projects like this that can deliver homes for people in resource-rich areas that will serve residents. You know, I'd like to have amenities like Trader Joe's and REI instead of open air drug sales where I live now. I urge you to move this project forward. Thank you.
Vince, please unmute yourself. Vince, you're still on mute?
Oh, sorry. I didn't know that. Vince Roche was Vice President of Housing and Community Development with the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. We endorse and support this project very strongly because it is a smart, climate-smart, friendly, mixed-use development envisioned in the general plans, urban village concept. People will be able to walk to shopping and retail and restaurants to reduce car trips. Also, building denser is the best thing we can do for our climate and our planet. It's going to be near jobs and in a resource-rich part of the city. I urge you to support this project this evening because it's the smart thing to do, the right thing to do. And it'll build much-needed housing in the right place. Thank you.
Carlin, please unmute yourself.
Okay, this is Carlin Blackham with Catalyze SV volunteer and a former urban planner and all sorts of good things. This project must go forward. It should be taller than it is right now. Catalyze SV just last Monday did a program on mobility on demand and how that's going to affect parking and, and traffic. And that is not in the nick, in the distant future. That is like at least the end of this year, next year. So you will see parking on demand and there's also a possibility that glideways will build down Stevens Creek and include this in the triangle. And the tri- triangle will be the new mid-down for San Jose.
All right, before we start, I understand that we have a row of hands up of speakers that have already spoken. Can we clarify that? If you've already spoken, you've already spoken and we have to leave it open for folks that have not had an opportunity to speak.
Yes, we have John Oberster, Amy Cody, Jill Bordes, they've already spoken.
Okay, so we can take them out of the queue and then that'll get us down to the remaining balance of folks that have not spoken.
Roberta Wade.
All right, so Robert Wade is our next speaker.
Robert, you can go ahead.
This is Roberta Wade.
Roberta has already spoken.
Sorry, sorry. Mohan, you can go ahead and speak.
Thank you very much for unmuting me. I'm really, really excited about the program that you're talking about it, you know? And I support 100% electrification. We are building net zero homes that we want to bring into the city. Our purpose is to mitigate the global warming and the climate change. In addition to that, you know, California has had a lot of fires. And I got inspired to build these properties and I'm in San Jose from paradise. So we develop the technology now to build completely fire-resistant homes, you know? We do not use any lumber in them. And if I can be of any help to the city, I would really, really like to introduce this technology to all of you. And build affordable homes. We can build faster homes and we can finish these projects within three months from start to finish. Thank you very much. Sitco Homes.
To clarify, Jill did not speak. Jill, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, thank you. I, I appreciate you noticing that I didn't speak on this item and I want to apologize and Chair Bonilla, I hope I can ask for a point of privilege. I emailed ahead of time of this meeting and asked if I would be able to speak on the consent calendar because I received a notice in the mail about the project. Item number B, I wanted to speak on item number A and item number B. It's too late to spike an item number B. I'm sure the applicant is not there to ask questions of. May I just quickly comment on consent item A under consent calendar because I was told that I would be, have that chance to speak.
Respectfully, no, we're gonna, I'm sorry, the city attorney wants to wait and so we'll, we'll give them a chance to wait.
Yes, Chair Bonilla, I actually wanted to comment on that at the end of this item. The individuals are permitted to speak on the consent calendar as required under the Brown Act. It is something I was going to raise after the conclusion of this item to revisit the consent calendar. So that individuals who are still on that want to speak can do so. But Ms. Porters is entitled to speak on the consent calendar and should be provided that opportunity at some point.
So are you saying then that I can give her that opportunity at this point?
You know, I, I'll defer to the chair on that one. I think ultimately, I, I don't believe Ms. Porters was the only, only individual that wanted to speak. And I think it, it's prudent for the commission to go back and revisit the consent calendar and there's also some items just in terms of the vote that we could clean up as well. So my suggestion would be to wait until this item is done to revisit the consent calendar.
Okay, well, I mean, in the future, I think we would have had this conversation ahead of time. I think we could, we could have avoided this. So here's what we'll do. Ms. Porter, since council is telling me this for the first time tonight, that you can, we're just going to have to go ahead and keep this part of the meeting moving. We will revisit the consent calendar at the end of the meeting and give you your opportunity to speak there. My apologies for that. I was not aware of that and council, maybe we should have a conversation offline first time you've ever been provided that information.
Sure.
Okay, we will now go to the next public speaker.
Jordan, please unmute.
Yes, good evening commissioners. Thank you so much for your time tonight. My name is Jordan Grimes and I'm an enthusiast, an enthusiastic supporter of the El Paso project. Specifically at the original heightened densities that were proposed. I think it's very important to discuss when it, when we are discussing new housing. That we specifically center the people who cannot afford to live in our area. That we specifically center the people who are being priced out of San Jose and who are being priced out of the region at large. It's really important and I don't think I've heard this mentioned tonight, that the latest income statistics have been released for 2022. And area median income in San Jose is now more than, for a family of four is now more than $168,000. That is a direct result of the lack of housing that has been built in San Jose and this region as a whole. So I strongly support moving forward with this project tonight and I hope you will consider. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Individual named Neighbor One, please unmute.
This is Neighbors for Intelligent Development. I'd like to talk about the road behind El Paso. It's currently closed from 10 AM or 10 PM to 7 AM. It has signs and a bollard at both ends. How is Sand Hill breaking this agreement? Number two, talking about the parcel at 1777 Saratoga Avenue. The two parcels are not contiguous. They are two separate projects, not connected in any way but ownership. Sand Hill said there is a pedestrian connection between the two sites. We do not see a pedestrian overpass or tunnel. Hence, there is no pedestrian connection. Therefore, it is not a signature project. It's definitely not pedestrian-friendly. They have to cross nine lanes of traffic on Saratoga Avenue. Number three, the parks. What happened to the 3.5 acre park? We gave up much more parkland than that for the low-income housing project and the housing tract that are across from Morland School. It's only, only the district that gave up this parkland for housing. Now it appears to be 1.1 acres. Point six acres is a sidewalk with two sides for homeless people and their tents. That means a half acre. That's not even enough for the people that live there. Also, what happened to the two minutes promised for speaking? We only got.
Kathy, please unmute yourself.
Yes, this is Kathy from Baker West and I'm with the others frustrated as we only get a minute to speak. We have been really collaborating with the ownership and wanting the development. I also want to just say that we also talk about a market rates. There is very little affordable housing in this, right? If we look, 850 residents is market rate. So all of the organizations that are talking about affordable housing, this is not the site for affordable housing. We would also like to know on the Alpasale Phase One plans are not adequately considered. And the residents input on the building heights, the densities, nor were they addressed on long-term jobs and the housing goals. We lack the visibility for the remainder of the Alpasale site and would recommend that you do eight stories and a traffic analysis. Thank you.
Emma, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I live within walking distance of the project. It doesn't even begin to fit our community. It, our community is old, open and airy. We have lots of greenery. I'd like you to preserve the 120 trees as we have to preserve ours as individuals, no matter what it costs. Limit the development, preferably to just commercial real estate. Plus one story of residential since we're going there. Bring him. We need a minimum of two car spaces per pres- residential unit. Plus commercial parking to reduce the conflict among the community members. And jobs that pay more than low-income wages. This is not the place for affordable housing. That would be downtown near all the services that support them such as Sacred Heart.
Vimal, please unmute yourself.
I'm a resident of the Baker West and I think I, some project like this would be very, very nice for the community. But I think the high concerns is definitely something that it like a 10-story building or a 12-story building would definitely not fit into the character of the neighborhood. So that, that's the big concern I have. So it would be good to restrict that to a smaller like age choice, something like that.
Thank you for your, your comments and if I read correct, oh, there's one more.
Terry, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I used to live in that area, so I know it very well. And I've been in the area for 30 years. And I know that when they built Santana Row, there was a lot of complaining about it being not fitting into the character of the neighborhood. But now we're all used to it and we can't imagine any other kind of structure in that area. And I think with time, people will get used to taller buildings in that area. They, it's, it's, I can easily imagine that, what the plan is to fit nicely over time in that area. I think it could use some some, something modern in that area.
Thank you. And with that, Paul will be our last comment since if I'm not mistaken, Neighbor One has already spoken.
Paul, you can go ahead and unmute.
Well, I'd just like to ask the planning commission to please restrict the building height to eight stories or less. I think if you do a quick calculation, if the building heights are roughly 60% of planned, you could still meet the housing density requirements of San Jose. As other people said, 12 and 10-story buildings would basically completely change the neighborhood. We would go from a suburban-like area, which all the local residents bought and contribute to, to a near downtown style living. Thank you.
Chair, there are two more hands that I don't believe have spoken.
Yeah, they have not spoken.
Lisa, please unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm, the Morland West Neighborhood Association sought to has sought good planning and compromise from the beginning. We've supported the transit-oriented, pedestrian-friendly, urban village concept. We've advocated for density and eight-story heights. We've asked for home ownership opportunities. Supported affordable housing and suggested including more than 15% minimum affordable housing. Given the property density. We've advocated for more green space, jobs and inclusion of small businesses. The project ended up with, we, that we've ended up with though, however, is clearly oversized for the location. Which lacks transit, infrastructure, planning and investment.
Alan, please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm a resident of Morland West and I do support this doing a limit of eight stories. I'm very concerned about traffic in this area, not just the adjacent traffic that's along Camel Avenue in Saratoga there. But extended out to the other arteries of Lawrence and Saratoga Avenue where they intersect with 280. Those are just treacherous intersections with the traffic that's already there and it appears that the flow of, of traffic was not taken into consideration on those. I'm also very concerned with all the water restrictions we have, of putting 20, 2,000 more new residents in the area. What that's going to do to the load on our water restrictions. And the monoliths that are going up at those heights, when the perspective of driving down Saratoga Avenue northbound. Today I see blue skies and Mount Hamilton. Now I'm going to see these concrete monoliths. I'd rather see it restricted in height a little.
Steve, please unmute yourself.
Hi, thanks for unmuting me. I am a member of Catalyze SV and I would encourage you to move forward with this project. I think it's a great use of the property. It's got great density. And the fact that it's combining homes with the commercial space is a nice way to activate and keep that space utilized. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And with that, that now concludes our public comment. We can now move on to item three, I'm sorry, four. The applicant has five minutes to respond to public comment. With that, the applicant, the floor is yours.
Okay, you could share a screen with Allison, please. Great. Chair Bonilla, Eric Shainhour again, land use consultant to the project. Let's review. Let's review a couple of public policy items that were discussed. With regard to height, uh, since the community brought up Valco, I just want to note that Valco has buildings of two hundred feet tall in Cupertino. Someone brought up Saratoga. Saratoga's new housing element envisions a ten story residential project in this neighborhood at Prospect and Lawrence. You can read it on their general plan website. Uh, but with regard to San Jose, the heights proposed on our project are very much consistent and actually less than uh heights that are allowed in similarly situated urban villages throughout the city. So on the screen, these are adopted urban village plans that the city council has approved. And as you can see, the Stevens Creek Urban Village Plan along Saratoga Avenue Stevens Creek allows heights up to a hundred and fifty feet on the large development sites. The Santana Row Valley Fair Urban Village Plan allows a hundred and fifty feet on Winchester and Stevens Creek. The Bass South Bascom Urban Village Plan allows a hundred and fifty feet on the larger development sites on South Bascom. North First Street, two hundred feet, East Santa Clara Street, a hundred and forty feet, and so on, and so on. So what we're proposing at ninety-nine feet, a hundred and twenty-seven feet, a hundred and thirty feet, and a hundred and thirty-two feet are similar to or less than uh other urban village areas throughout the the city. Going on to the next question. So how do you design a taller building to be sensitive to the neighborhood? So this is a cross section of our building number two, I'm sorry, building number one, um, which fronts on Keto Road. And to the left side would be the Baker West Single Family Neighborhood. You can see the property line. And then is the existing berm. So there's an existing fifty-six foot wide berm with mature double row trees along the entire berm existing. We're not touching it at all. So there there is a solid screen of trees between us and the single family neighborhood. And then you can see the red line. That's the forty-five degree daylight plane line. That is a good planning standard for putting taller buildings near single family neighborhoods. And you can see how far our building is outside the forty-five degree line. In fact, this building is two hundred and fifteen feet away from the property line. And even at that, we still step the building back. You can see it steps away from the neighborhood. Let's go to the next slide, which is uh building number two, which is the closest building to the neighborhood. The orientation has flipped, so the single family neighborhood is on the right side now. Once again, you can see the existing berm fifty-six feet wide with mature trees on top, double row. And you can see the forty-five degree plane line. So in this location, we our overall building height is much lower. We've brought it down to ninety-nine feet total height. And we've still set it back a hundred feet away from the property line to the nearest point. And then we've stepped the upper levels back away from the building. These designs far exceed the citywide design guidelines for neighborhood compatibility with new taller buildings next to single single family neighborhoods. Moving on to transportation. Just wanted to note that this area actually is fairly well served by VTA bus transit. So the red lines on this uh on this map, this is a VTA map, by the way, uh, are frequent service lines, which means that the service is twenty-five minutes or faster or or more frequent on both bus route fifty-seven and twenty-six. Uh, Route fifty-six is a local serving line. And then the uh express route one oh one also passes through this area. With these bus routes, you can conveniently get to jobs or or resources in downtown Campbell, downtown San Jose, job centers in Santa Clara and Cupertino, or head the other direction to Saratoga. So if people want to take transit, the options are here. And if we don't put high density near transit, no one will ever ride it, and it will always be a financial loser to our community.
With that, Mr. Shane Hour, we are now at the five minute mark. What I'll do is I'm gonna now go ahead and open it up for commissioner questions. However, I will not close the public hearing in order to give staff, I'm sorry, my colleagues, the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant as well. So with that, colleagues, let's see a Commissioner Lord and Noah's hand is up. Commissioner Martin Law and then Commissioner Torrance.
Thank you, Chair. And I just want to say thank you to all the members of the public that have come to speak tonight, that have contacted us over email. Um, I think this probably second only to the Google project since I joined the commission in terms of the amount of public interest in this project, both for and against. And so thank you for all of that input and feedback. So I've lived in this area myself for the past six years by Saratoga and Moore Park. Spent a lot of time in the El Paso area. And when I was growing up, I spent a lot of time there, too. Um, so this is something, you know, the future of this area is really important to me personally. I've got a lot of question, well, not a lot, but I've got a number of questions for staff about various issues that have been raised in the discussion around this project. So first off, I'm a couple of different numbers have been thrown around for open space. And I guess for the for as pertains to the project's parks obligations, um, if staff could just clarify how much park space is being included here in this project, because I think the different numbers going back and forth have been confusing.
So good evening, Commissioner Zachman, this is your Parks and Recreation Planner with the Planning Department or the Parks and Recreation Department. I'm happy to provide some clarification on the obligation that the that the project has. The project is proposing nine hundred and ninety-four units. And when we convert that into a parkland obligation, it equates to roughly six point nine acres of parkland. Um, when we convert that to an in lieu fee, that's roughly eighteen million dollars in in lieu fee that would be paid for that land. The project itself is proposing the three point five acres. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I apologize. Uh, the project itself is proposing the three point five acres of open space. We are working with the developers still to kind of determine what will be public space and versus park space. That hasn't quite been determined. You know, the balance of open space, we think, is is good for the scale of the development and their nature that's being built there. What will be is the park space exactly and whether it will be dedicated to the city for ownership? And it's mean, it's kind of still to be determined.
Gotcha. And so it wouldn't have to be determined until the certificate of occupancy is issued. Is that how that works?
Uh, prior to building.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay. And then um any in lieu fees that are paid, that just goes to the city's pot for park fees and doesn't isn't necessarily tied to any building parts in a particular area, right?
Uh, it would be tied to the area of the project. So depending upon the usage and whether it's in a neighborhood park or in a community park, there's a three quarter mile nexus or three mile nexus. So the fees would be deposited into the park trust fund, and they would remain there for usage to acquire land or improve the park land in surrounding area.
I didn't know that. So thank you for clarifying how that works. Okay. Um, and then I'm also just curious about, so I, you know, the berm has come up and having visited the area many times throughout my life, I know there's uh big trees that were built that are on the berm. I believe those were installed when this shopping center was first developed back in the eighties or nineties. And I'm curious, um, what is the total height of that tree line, including the berm? And you know, how that just curious how that compares to the height of the heights in the project itself?
Uh, maybe I can defer to the applicant through that response from a parkland perspective.
Sure.
Did you want us to answer now or later?
Yeah, it would be good to commission more than us. Yeah, now.
So I think the best way to answer your question is to show you a picture. Would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
So, um, Allison, if we can call up the, we've have photographs from the adjacent residence homes that show the mature trees. And we've computer simulated the buildings in the images. So this is looking from the adjacent homes. And Allison with the with the cursor can show you the trees that are on the berm. They're the tall ones. And in most of these images, you can't see our building. She can show you the peak, the peak of our building right behind one of the trees. So it creates a great visual screen. But if I had to give you a number, you know, the 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 trees are probably thirty-five between thirty-five and fifty feet tall, depending on which species it is.
And then what's the elevation of the berm itself above like the surrounding area?
Um, the berm is, I don't know, Ken, do you have a better estimate? I'd say the berm is probably about fifteen to twenty feet.
Fifteen to twenty feet. And it does vary.
Okay, uh, no, thanks. That was just some a curiosity that I had um in that conversation about the role of the trees. Um, okay. And then um another policy question for staff. So uh, as has been discussed a lot with this, this is a designated growth area, does not yet have an urban village plan. It was Horizon Three back when the Horizon System existed. So I assume we're not going to see an urban village plan anytime too soon for this particular area. But I'm curious, um, one of the concerns I've that we heard expressed was that this project um takes up a significant portion of the allocated residential capacity for this urban village area, growth area. And I'm curious, are those numbers set in stone? Or is that something that could change when the actual plan is considered and adopted? In light of this project, having, you know, say that this project was approved by that that point, how's that work?
Michael, let's see your hands up.
Yeah, so the numbers, things have changed with the four year review. So um, the growth numbers that are in the general plan currently really are for the purposes of SEQA and aren't don't necessarily reflect the maximum amount of development that could occur in a given urban village or potential at the minimum, right? They're they're generally, well, in most, I'd say almost all cases, you can build more. So um, those numbers have been adjusted in previous urban village plans. So yeah, so if we were, when we do a plan in this area, we would look at those numbers. You might recommend more. We might actually have a plan that could theoretically allow more, but uh not change the number in the general plan. So there's a lot of different potential outcomes. Now, the the SEQA would analyze only a certain ma certain amount of development. And if someone wanted to go above that amount, the developer would have to do additional SEQA. Um, one of the challenges that we've had is we don't have a lot of capacity around the city anymore. It's not because we're building housing. It's because we have so many growth areas and a lot of the capacities been stripped out about like growth areas and moved downtown because of Google downtown west, other development occurring downtown and other urban village. This is, I don't think this village, I don't believe this village lost capacity. It might have lost a little bit. I don't think it did. But um, yeah, so the capacities are something that are very malleable and can change, could change. We did actually apply for a grant to do an urban village out here, and it was denied. We didn't get funding, and it's possible the council could give us money down the road to do something out here. We think it is a good area to do a village plan, because this is where the market would want to build. Um, but right now we don't have funding at the moment. We may get something that's this budget year, we'll see.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. And then just one more point I wanna, I guess a concern I want to raise and a suggestion for be incorporated into whatever our recommendation ends up being tonight. Um, so District One, which is where this project is, I believe parts of District Six as well, and I think that's it. Anyways, there's the West San Jose Multimodal Transportation Improvement Plan that um uh, the Transportation Department is working on. And that allows areas in its boundary to get be eligible for really important transportation improvements that I think would be particularly beneficial in this area where this and other projects that have been just, you know, mentioned tonight were to be approved. But as it stands, the boundaries of that plan include basically none of Saratoga Avenue. Um, and so it doesn't come down to the area where this project is. Um, and given the existing importance of Saratoga and the future increased importance as more and more projects are proposed in this area, I want to ask the commission that whatever we vote on tonight, we also make a recommendation to city council that Saratoga, the entire Saratoga Avenue corridor be include or be added to the West San Jose Multimodal Transportation Improvement Plan. Uh, I think that's it for me for now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin Law. Commissioner Torrance. And then Commissioner Orinlesswise.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, you lower my hand. Okay. So wow, a lot of information swimming around up here. I think for a lot of us tonight. But what one thing that has really hit me in this is the affordability piece, because there have been so many times where we have listened to proposals where the developer pays an in lieu fee, or I forgot how to say that, right? The whatever, however, we say it, right? They pay a fee instead. Okay. And I greatly appreciate the fact that the affordable housing is being included right in this project. I am a beneficiary of affordable housing. That is the reason I've been able to live in San Jose, married to a teacher, teach preschool and raise four children. Because I was able to arrange a range of privately private situation and live here affordably. Otherwise, I would have moved to Sacramento. But because I can live here, raise my kids, I get to enjoy all the resources and also contribute to the community. So affordable housing is a good thing, and I greatly appreciate this. And I applaud the applicant for including that right there so that those residents like myself can enjoy a resource rich area at a price they can afford. So but when you live in an area, you do need parks. So the one concern I have is the small amount of park of of park space. So I want to ask, I think this would be for PRNS, is what in what distance is there green space for these residents? Whether that's a school where people can go and take walks, what kind of green spaces available will be available to these residents?
Um, if you give me just a moment, I could take a look at that for you. Um, off the top of my head, there are a few park resources that are kind of within the vicinity of the area. Saratoga Creek Park is the one that comes to mind immediately. Yes, sir. Just give me one second to pull up my.
Sure, take your time. I think the lot that by house sits on is point six of an acre, and it's not a very big site. So one acre doesn't seem very large. And I think that's what I've heard tonight for the proposed park.
Clarity, Mr. Shane, I'm to come back to you as well to give us clarity on the park space from your perspective as well.
Sorry, this is taking.
That's okay.
I can also speak to that generally, this is Maria Blanco, Environmental Project Manager. Um, so the nearest parks to the project site include the Saratoga Creek Dog Park, that's approximately zero point three miles northwest of the project sites. Um, El Quito Park, that's approximately zero point four miles southwest of the project sites. Rainbow Park, Hathaway Park, which are both one point four miles from the project site. Um, and these were included under the Public Services Section of the Draft Environmental Impact Report. I also wanted to quickly speak to, if I may, um, to the students generated by the project and how they would be serviced by the surrounding schools. So students generated by the project were analyzed also under Public Services. And as noted on page two oh six of the draft EIR, the project would add up to approximately three hundred and sixty-three new elementary and middle school students and at a maximum of ninety-nine new high school students. So in the preparation of the Draft Environmental Impact Report, the environmental consultant did reach out directly to the affected school districts. They would be. they would accommodate all of the students generated by the project. Thank you.
Let me also, uh, just because parks have been coming up, let's also make sure, uh, Mr. Shane Hour, if you can clarify that as well, that we were, everyone's, you know.
Yeah, so Al- Allison is going to call up our slide on the open space, just so there's no confusion. And, and Zach Mendez, when the park chairman is correct, that, you know, we haven't worked out an agreement yet. So the exact size of the park is not pinpointed, but on, um, on this exhibit, the bottom left corner is where the, the dedicated public park would be. So we are committed to giving the land to the city, one point one acres of land, as well as funding the full construction of the public park. So it'd be a neighborhood park like any other neighborhood park in the city. However, we do suggest it should be more urban in character since the, this project is an urban project, but that will be determined by the neighborhood. The balance of our site is privately owned, publicly accessible space in the form of pasos, passeos, plazas, out and outdoor dining. So that's what we are providing. In terms of, cause I think you mentioned, uh, Commissioner Torrance, uh, you know, other open space and schools. Well, right across the street from this site is Morland Middle School. And they have large fields, they have a track. Uh, so if, if someone wanted a large field or wanted to schedule the school field for a soccer game or what have you, go fly a kite, it's right across the street. And then one block to the east is Prospect High School, which is a massive campus with football fields, soccer fields, softball fields. So, um, there is a range of types of open space within the immediate neighborhood. What's needed is the neighborhood park with the playground so that families with young kids can walk to the park and play in the park, and that's what we're going to deliver.
Hey, thank you very much.
Commissioner Torrance, does that conclude or did you have more questions? If you do, that's fine.
Those are my questions, but I'll just conclude my questioning here, uh, by saying thank you for, for answering those. That does make me feel better, although sometimes those public, uh, school lands are not always available. Sometimes they'll fence those off. But that's, that's, that's good, that there's open space. So that, that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Orin Laswise, and then Commissioner Young.
Hello, um, this, I'm, I'm really impressed with everybody's passion in this project. I think you've all done a, a wonderful job, including staff and, and everyone involved. I do have some concerns regarding, um, parking, given the scale and size of the project and the reduction I saw noted in the staff report. I think it's a reduction six point one percent of parking requirement for that size. So one of the things that I'd like to see is maybe some sort of condition of approval that would, because there's so much shopping in nearby, some sort of like parking agreement so that people could actually use some of the existing, um, parking space. And another thing that I saw, um, when I was looking at the renderings, I see that it's like a pasel, right? So people could walk. And then there's like, um, parking lot there. So one of the things that I'm concerned about is safety, that a car goes through that pasel while people are there. So I don't know if there's a way, I know like at San Jose State, they have like these, um, movable, like concrete kind of thing. So something like that. So just for safety for the people that are there, I'd like to see something like that. I also, um, believe that, you know, recreation is really important to the quality of life, open space. I was really concerned about, um, parks as well. One of the things that I'd like to see, I mean, I didn't know if you had like a rooftop pool, you know, some built-in stage on, you know, in the pasel for like music or entertainment, um, something along those lines that I'd like to see. I also would like, um, you know, maybe art shows, pop-ups where, you know, local, um, people that make things could go and sell them for, for more jobs for the people and for more enjoyment for the community there. Um, so just different forms to, um, create recreation and utilizing that space to its maximum use is something that I like to see. But I do like this project because I think San Jose, it's about time you grow up and not out to prevent urban sprawl. I think this is fantastic. This is a perfect example of that. To be an incentive to use VTA and all the public, uh, transportation in this, in the area, I don't know, maybe you could have like some move-in special, uh, you know, and give people a free VTA pass or something, um, to encourage people to actually have a pass to be able to use those services. I'd really like that. And I know that a lot of people are not just using bikes now or using like these different, you know, skateboards that have motors and all these different type of scooters. And maybe from the neighborhood want to go there, but want a safe place to put not just their bike, but also, you know, whatever gadget they use to get there. So maybe, um, like, like a locker or a cage area where people could, could put some stuff like that. Um, so those are just, um, my thoughts, some recommendations, but overall fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Orin Laswise. I'll now go to Commissioner Young and to Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Chair, just a process question here. I do have a couple of questions, but then, uh, just to confirm, we are going to have a chance to come back and let the commissioners state their preferences on the project. Is that correct?
That, that define what you mean by preferences of the project?
Well, what I'm saying is, um, if we can ask our questions now and then have another opportunity to come back and talk about our actual thoughts about the project before the vote.
Sure.
Okay, great. And one other favor would be following the questions. Uh, if there any chance we could take a, a very brief break, um, we've been going almost two hours now, so. Okay, um, I have a question for the applicant, um, but there's been a lot of talk about, first of all, I wanted to, uh, I did want to disclose, I did meet with both the, uh, several of the neighborhood associations on Zoom last Friday for half an hour, and I also met with the developer on Zoom. So I, I, I think I have a pretty good sense of, uh, the issues and the feelings on both sides. And I, I appreciate those meetings very much. For the developer, Allison, if you could talk about, um, a, a lot has been discussed about traffic. And I know there's concerns about the mitigation measures, but what hasn't been mentioned is the work that I believe you're going to do to improve the safety of a couple of the intersections in the area as well as provide some additional crosswalks. Could you talk about that?
Yeah, absolutely. And if helpful, it might be, um, if you don't mind, if I can share the site plan maybe and
Go ahead.
Be able to explain that. So give me one moment to be able to pull that up again. So thank you for your question, and I think that as part of our project, we are also committed to a lot of, uh, site, off-site improvements and, uh, transportation improvement. So, the enhanced crosswalks, uh, will connect our project, uh, nicely to the two sides here. Um, and then, um, you know, we've been working with DOT and Public Works, uh, for a while and we've identified Public Works as priorities and committed as a project, um, to helping mitigate those, um, areas for Public Works. Our project was not, did not cause a, an unmitigatable VMT impact, but this location right here at West Campbell and Hamilton was identified and made known to us, uh, by Public Works and DOT that this is a priority location that they want to improve, um, as a VMT measure. And so as part of our project, we will be, uh, per, again, DOT and Public Works's, recommendation, closing this pork chop off, creating an enhanced crosswalk here that allows for the project to connect nicely to the neighborhood back here more than west and increasing pedestrian crossings, signalized, new signalizations, creating new curb sidewalks and, uh, additional, again, pedestrian crosswalks through here and here. Similarly, uh, pork chop islands on this corner in front of our project on both project frontages will also be closed off. And in lieu of those will be increased, um, raised bike plant, uh, bike pathways and new curbs and, um, and sidewalk areas as well, so that, you know, I think that the, the design of pork chops, um, when projects come along, projects are encouraged and, uh, what projects are trying to encourage eliminations of these pork chops. So as part of our project, all three of these, uh, pork chops that are surrounding our site will be, um, removed. And clearly a lot of signal, um, improvements here, median work to accommodate all the new driveways and walk pathways and crossings will all be improved as part of the project. So a lot of off-site work, um, will be included to improve the overall circulation and safety for both bike and ped in the area.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Um, you know, when we talk about traffic and whether the medic mitigation measures are sufficient, I tend to trust the traffic engineers. I'm not one. And the traffic engineers do say that the mitigation is sufficient. But I, I do want to just point out that this developer is doing safety improvements that are really not required for the project. They're doing it voluntarily. And in case you're not familiar with the pork chop terminology, because I wasn't, it's a intersection where drivers can make a free right turn without having to stop at a red, and that's probably one of the most dangerous intersections for pedestrians. So, uh, they're eliminating two of those, one of which was the highest priority for Public Works. Um, just one other comment and question, and then I'll, I'll let Commissioner Garcia speak. Some talk has been made about transit and whether this has sufficient transit infrastructure. There's multiple VTA bus lines that run here, including rapid service. So I, I'm having a difficult time understanding the concerns about insufficient transit here. And I just wanted to confirm one other thing with the developer, which is I believe you told me that the parking costs are actually unbundled from the monthly lease cost. Is that correct? So could you describe how that incentivizes transit?
Yes, if I may. So, um, as part of this project, we will have a robust TDM plan as a requirement. And one of the measures in our TDM plan is to unbundle the parking from, um, the cost of, uh, you know, uh, the residential unit. So that would work to encourage people because they will have to pay an additional cost instead of having an inclusive parking space. Um, if they want to have a parking space on the site, they will have to pay extra costs to use that. So those types of measures, um, when in place are designed to encourage people to clearly try, find alternate modes of transportation and hopefully not rely on a single occupancy vehicle. So we will have a lot of TDM measures, um, across both the residential as well as the commercial, um, users on the site.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Young, does that conclude your questions? Perfect. Well, Commissioner Garcia, and then we'll Commissioner Montoya. And then I, after Commissioner questions, I will take you up on that advice and call for a five-minute recess. So, uh, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Chair Bonilla. I actually don't have any questions. I, uh, had a, my perspective, so I'll hold for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Montoya, yes?
Most of my questions have been answered, but I actually do have, um, just two possibly. First one is, what's the distance from eighty-five to the actual project site?
Staff? Did you hear the question?
Hold on, I'm measuring it right now, unless, uh, someone in the conference has it.
Yeah. Allison, Mr. Shane, are you all have that answer?
I, I don't have the exact number and I can do it real quick on, uh, a measurement right now, but, um, having driven that mo- many times, it's I would say under, definitely under a mile if that, um, but.
I'm just doing a quick measurement, Allison. It says it's about exactly one mile from property line to, um, the freeway entrance.
Okay, so easy access to the freeway. Um, all right. And then my other question was that, and I think the, um, the public speaker, um, made a comment about one of the streets being used as a thorough, uh, thorough way. And I think that may have been, they were referring to Elmwood. Um, can someone address, uh, are there any, any mitigations, uh, being taken for traffic to go onto Elmwood or any of the neighboring, um, streets?
Yes, hi, this is Manjip Inwait from the Department of Public Works. Um, we took a look at actually North Lawn Drive, because that was a major concern that we had heard, um, since it, it connects from Quito Road all the way to Campbell Avenue. So we did both a, um, a volume study and a speed study along that stretch of road. And we found that A, the volumes are with, well within the range of what a local residential street can carry, which is around three thousand vehicles per day. Um, the analysis showed that currently there's a maximum of nineteen hundred, or let me confirm my numbers here, but, uh, a maximum of seventeen hundred vehicles per day that are currently going through that, um, through that road. And then we also looked at, we also did a speed study current on that road as well. And right now the speed also is within an acceptable range along that stretch. And so we aren't recommending any traffic calming measures at this point with the existing conditions out there. But, you know, we can, um, further involve the Department of Transportation to look into some of those concerns that we have heard, um, again, in the future, um, regarding traffic calming along that stretch.
And then, um, I just have a, just a comment. Um, I'm a transplant, transplant to San Jose, um, from Southern California and, uh, own a house in Southern California, bought a house out of state, have lived in dense housing, um, in San Jose the entire decade that I've been here now. And, um, if it weren't for density projects that exist, um, I think that I couldn't afford to live here. So I, I reiterate the statement that one of my colleagues had made about the affordability. I work for a nonprofit. And, uh, we definitely, I believe, need projects that, um, do have higher density. And I think what I really like about this project is that it is on thorough way. You know, Saratoga is not a small street. It's not embedded in a, in a neighborhood. And so just kind of when I, when, when evaluating this project, um, taking those, those items into account is what I, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. One thing, yes. Uh, do we have any other commissioner questions? Okay, seeing none, I am going to take Commissioner Young's advice and call for a five-minute recess. When we return, we'll deliberate and vote, uh, after deliberation. So with that, we will come back at eight twenty-eight PM. after deliberation. So with that, we will come back at eight twenty-eight PM. Resuming the meeting, we are now at the portion where colleagues you can weigh in with your opinions. I will also weigh in at the end. So with that.
I'm not sure if Commissioner Torrance is back.
Oh, is she? I thought she was back.
I think we have Quorum though, right?
Yeah.
Fair.
Yeah, there she goes. Perfect. There you go. All right. So with that, colleagues, comments? Commissioner Olavario.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate everyone coming out and speaking at the public hearing tonight. Appreciate a lot of the questions and comments raised by my fellow commissioners. You know, we've approved a variety of high-density projects the past few years that are abiding by the established policies of the city. And we do it to meet the city's goals of housing production with the limited land that's less to remain to be developed. And we've done so in densities we have not historically done. But this commission has been approving them left and right consistently because, again, it matches the established goals put out by the city's twenty forty general plan where we're allotting for upwards of four hundred thousand additional residents by the year twenty forty, which we can debate whether that will happen or not. But long story short, the projects that come before us that have staff recommendations are fitting within what the city has laid out for the development community to do. These developments don't occur by the city actually building projects. They occur through the private developers, as we all know at the commission, but for members of the public that are sometimes maybe fatigued or concerned about what's happening. These things have come about through city policies and state mandates on housing production. And so therefore, you know, I'm supportive of the staff recommendation. I'm comfortable the way the staff recommendation is. I know there was a suggestion about adding something, but that's really the city council's purview to do so. But ultimately, you know, this is a project that doesn't show up overnight. It'll take, you know, I mean, the developer may have a timeline they're sharing, but in my experience, this could take upwards of a decade. These projects are big. They take a long time to do. We were approving fourteen stories on West San Carlos back in two thousand and eight. So we can only expect these densities and heights to increase. Again, sorry for being verbose there, but I want to just put forward a motion to support the professionals' planning staff recommendation.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
All right. So motion on the floor, motion by Olavario, second by Torrance. However, with that, we will.
It wasn't Torrance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Oh, Montagnes, I'm so sorry. Sorry, Commissioner Montagnes, with the second. We now have a motion and a second. However, I do want to recognize that Caballero, Young, and then Lardenwa.
Thank you. I didn't ask any questions because most of my questions were asked by our, my fellow commissioners, and I didn't want to reiterate them. I reviewed this project, and I have to say that I'm pleasantly pleased with it. I think it's beautiful. I think that I have traveled to a lot of other cities across the nation that have these types of large high-density paseos, mixed use, and they really make neighborhoods very vibrant and places where people congregate and increase the economic vitality of these communities. And that's what we want to see ultimately in San Jose across the city, not just in downtown, but in a variety of places. I'm getting a lot of feedback.
Yeah, I am as well. Can we put our, let's put our Zoom on mute here?
Okay. So I just, I am in support of this. I love the fact that it includes affordable housing. I would like to see more open space, but I'm actually the fact that there are several parks nearby. I think it's near transit and near major thoroughways. And I do think that it makes our community, the additional one thousand homes and, you know, apartments, condos, whatever, really do help us meet our housing goals. And so I am going to be in support of this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Caballero. With that, we'll go Commissioner Young, then Lardenwa.
Thank you, Chair. First, I'd like to commend the neighborhood associations, the ones I met with for your positive approach to this. You know, often on the planning commission, we hear only negative things about projects, and I want to really commend you, the leaders of the neighborhood associations on your positive approach to this. And I know how difficult that is. I've worked in neighborhood associations, was on the neighborhoods commission for a time, and I know how difficult it is to get consensus. I really want to commend you, and frankly, your efforts have made it a better project. Number one, you expressed opposition to an educational use there, and the developer withdrew that. That's huge. They had a client in mind. So I think you can definitely take credit for that. You improved the parklands, you improved the safety of the area. You encouraged the developer to put two levels of subterranean parking at a huge expense, by the way, but they did that to provide more open space. I think it's a beautiful project. And I'm going to support it. And so really, then the question comes down to the height of the buildings, right? And this is a, this is a challenge we face as planning commissioners because no one likes to have tall buildings in their neighborhood. It's very challenging in San Jose because our major boulevards, where we need to build higher buildings, almost all of them back up to single-family residences, neighborhoods. So it's tough. And I understand the concern of the residents. But the fact of the matter is that, as some of the other speakers mentioned, the housing situation in the city and in this valley, it's unsustainable right now. We have such a shortage of housing, and the housing, the rental housing and ownership is so expensive that we are, we are getting to a point where our city will not be sustainable. Why? Because people that work in service jobs, in hotel or restaurants or retail, and even people like letter carriers and teachers, police officers and firefighters, they can't afford to live here anymore. So we cannot have a city if we don't have those folks here. And the only way we're going to be able to solve that problem is to build more housing. You know, and to the folks that commented that they wish more of this project was affordable. First of all, I commend the developer for putting the affordable units onsite and not paying the in-lit fees. I commend you for that. And also, I think what we need to remember is building a thousand dwelling units creates affordability elsewhere, because the more supply of housing we have, the less expensive housing becomes throughout the city, right? So even though, you know, there's only a hundred and fifty quote-unquote affordable units, projects like this are the solution to our challenge. And you know, we have it, we have a general plan. The general plan authorizes the heights that these buildings are being proposed at. In fact, they could be higher under our general plan. So I know it's difficult. I know it's difficult for many of us, including me, to imagine our city changing and getting higher. And but I think if we want to remain a vibrant, healthy city welcoming where people can live, we need to build higher, we need to build more dense. So I'll be supporting the project. Thanks.
Mr. Young, thank you. Commissioner Lardenwa?
So I agree with a lot of things my colleagues have said so far. I'm going to avoid repeating. They said, but, you know, just going back to, you know, I know a lot of the concern around this project has had to do with the amount of affordable housing in it and with how this impacts park space and access to parks in West San Jose. And I know I've talked a lot about how District One has fewer parks than any other council district. It's certainly a huge issue in this part of town. And, but when it comes down to it, that's an issue with how we regulate development. This project and any project have to meet the requirements set out in our ordinances. And so you know, this project does meet its affordable housing obligations by providing fifteen percent onsite units. It will have to, in one way or another, meet its parks obligations. So while, you know, I guess what I'm saying is our roles of planning commissioners is to vote on whether a project follows the rules or not. And it does. And so but definitely the parks issue is really important. It's just, this is what's required by the ordinance, and that's what the project is doing. When it comes to just the project itself and the size of it, this is underutilized land. This is, and it's been like that, you know, my entire life, it's been underutilized land. And it is a long major street, Saratoga Avenue. It is near Highway eighty-five and Lawrence Expressway. As Commissioner Young said, it's difficult to build something in San Jose that isn't near a single-family neighborhood. But a long major thoroughfares are where we're supposed to do it, going by the general plan. And so this isn't easy to do this kind of development infill because, you know, people are used to the status quo, but I think it is important that we be pursuing this kind of development through our growth areas. And then, you know, going to the traffic issue, that was why earlier I emphasized that I think it's a really big hole that the West San Jose Multimodal Transportation Improvement Plan doesn't include the Saratoga area at all. And that's the transportation improvements that could come with this area being part of that plan would be important for mitigating the impacts of this project and for other projects that are being considered, you know, both along Prospect and Lawrence and nearby in Saratoga. So I want to offer as an amendment to the motion on the table right now to recommend that city council expand the West San Jose Multimodal Transportation Improvement Plan to include all of Saratoga Avenue. I recognize that this is not specific to this project. This is not specifically a land use issue. But it is just a recommendation, and I think it's something important for council to pursue to address the whole situation in the area that this project is a part of. So putting that motion on the floor, that amendment on the floor.
So request for an amendment has been made. Will the maker of the motion accept the request for amendment?
Well, Chair, thank you. I believe that it would determine be make a friendly amendment, but I think Commissioner Lardenwa has just simply stated, I want to make an amendment to the motion.
Well, I mean, I wasn't being specific. Would that be a friendly amendment?
So if you're asking if it's a friendly amendment, I would consider language such as the city should consider. But I'd say recommend is even stronger because I don't know all the particulars of that program. And unless planning staff tonight can present the merits of that program, and I understand it, recommending it is difficult, but considering it is something to consider. But I'm sure there are other parts of the city that are facing developments such as this that may desire it as well. But I don't know the limitations. I don't know really much about that plan enough to say I recommend it because consider it is fine. That's what I would work for on language.
Yeah, I am not particularly picky about consider versus recommend. So.
So are you then clarifying to state that you would like to make a friendly amendment with the word consider within the amendment?
Yes.
I accept.
Okay.
We have to ask the seconder.
Yeah, I was about to do that. With that, I will ask Commissioner Montagnes.
Just a real quick question. Would it be more, would it service better to send it back to transportation so they can look it over and then they can make the recommendation or consideration to the city council from a perspective of process?
I mean, I'm just going to say, I know that transportation is what that plan is under. I just, I don't know what.
I mean, it is their work. So for me, you know, they're the committee that has the, you know, that this is what they work on. And so if we're going to send it anywhere, I would probably send it to I mean, if there was a planning issue that was, you know, that another committee was recommending to go somewhere, I would like them to recommend it to come to the planning commission, set a respect to the transportation commission. I would probably say we should send that part to the transportation commission.
Okay. So, Michael, you've got your hands up, your hand up.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's hard because DOT is not here tonight to speak to that. I know a little bit of the origin of the multimodal improvement plan that exists. So they're not here. I mean, you could make a recommendation to consider and then DOT would be at council to sort of respond with a response to that, you know, consider recommendation that you have, whether like that's something we can do, or we plan on doing that, but through another process or whatever that may be. So they would likely be at planning commission and they, I mean, I'm sorry, city council, and they could respond there. Alternatively, you have to sort of put the request to DOT and they have to respond to you guys at a different time, which you could do too. But I think saying, just putting consider for now could be okay. If he respond to council.
Yeah, I would be okay with consider for now, sending that to council. Would you be amenable to that, Commissioner Montagnes, still, or?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So then we'll then Commissioner Oliver, just so we're on the same page, and the amendment is to Commissioner Lardenwa, why don't you restate it now with your language? Yeah.
Yeah. I guess for city council to consider amending the boundaries of the West San Jose Multimodal Transportation Improvement Plan to include entirety of Saratoga Avenue.
Is that amenable to the maker of the motion, second?
Yeah, that's fine, Chair.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Perfect. All right, perfect. Thank you.
And then Chair, just on that question, if I may, for planning staff, when planning commission makes a motion and has a consideration of a different policy of a different department, would you be inclined then to, in the staff report that goes to city council, to have comment from that department on that item from the commission? Or do Or do you, to your point earlier, just have them there and answer the question?
It depends. If there's time in the memo, we'll have DOT respond to that in writing. Sometimes there's not time, I'm not sure what the turnaround on this is, but it would be addressed in our presentation. We'd have a slide on it and DOT would speak to it.
Right, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and thank you, everyone, for entertaining this. I think it's really important and I, but I acknowledge it's different than something we don't often do, so thank you.
No, no, thank you. Commissioner Torrance?
So my quick comment is I am super excited now that I heard that there could be three hundred thirty-three students coming from this project with the affordable housing and just having dense housing because our schools do need kids. We don't want all the kids leaving San Jose and going elsewhere because teachers need kids to teach, to have jobs. So that got me extra excited, and I am definitely in support of this project tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Torrance. Do we have any other comments from colleagues? Seeing, and I'll go ahead and weigh in. I'll be honest, you know, when I first read the packet, I liked what I read, I liked what I saw. You know, I'm over here in District Five, the east side, where, you know, I'm craving these types of big picture investments. But out of fairness, when I saw that there was a lot of community commentary, I did take it upon myself to to connect with the neighborhood groups as well as the developer. And I think in the conversations that I had, it became pretty clear to me, and I don't want to minimize anyone's concerns because I understand it is your community, that very often, every Wednesday, we run into the same concerns, and the concerns are often out of that, you know, for lack of a better word, that fear of your neighborhood being transformed overnight. And I think Commissioner Oliverio stated it quite eloquently. These types of projects take at least a decade to kind of see some real movement. But even within that movement, though, these are exactly the type of projects that I envisioned happening throughout the city. We are the largest city in the Bay Area. We are a city with a limited amount of space for housing. Undeniably, we're not just building housing here, we're building community space. Similar to what someone said earlier, Santana Row had a lot of opposition, and now Santana Row is, you know, a very, very important social place for this city. You also talk about the fact that we are creating some vibrancy that in my mind can help further become a contagion for the rest of the city. Again, back here in the east side, wanting projects of this type. But I think what really got me, it's consistent with, you know, something I talked about very often when I sought the appointment of planning commissioner, that I wanted to see more affordable housing integrated into projects because very often we do have two San Jose's. What I like about this project is that it's one San Jose. It is literally a mixture of socioeconomic backgrounds in one. And to me, that's really what makes a city, you know, a major, not just destination, but a cultural leader. And that is for me something that I was really, really impressed by because it's easier to say, here, I'll write a check, call it a day. It's a very different statement to say, we're gonna build the affordable housing into the project and make it a part of this community. So again, I wanted to be fair to the community, I wanted to be fair to all parties, and I did meet with everyone. But my conclusion, and again, I don't want to minimize, I think the Commissioner Young's point on the community side, great work. Your work has gotten, it's probably not what you want to hear from me right now, but nevertheless, great work, your work, your advocacy got you here. And there's still a lot of conversation to have, right? Because as we all know, in this space, things change, markets change, ideas change, and, you know, who knows, right? But I think where we are right now, project wise, it's something I'm proud to support. It's something I'd be even prouder to have by side of town. It's something that I continue to talk about and encourage and want because there is some value in creating not just economic vibrancy, but that people vibrancy. And that's something that to me, this project hits on the mark by making a very clear statement that for those of us, I am a product of affordable housing. I grew up in public housing. And, you know, this isn't public housing, this is a mixture of affordable housing within market rate. We want to talk about changing lives, that changed lives right there. That belief that you're worthy to be a part of this, to me, is something that really stuck out and something that I absolutely want to support. And I will go back to show you all that I do listen to public comments. Someone, I think from Catalyze SV, said, look, in my community, we've got drug dealers and, you know, we'd love for this. You know, I'm not gonna say that about my community, but I will say that in my community, we are starving for economic investment in this type of vibrancy and energy. So it is, again, a question of perspective for those of us on this side of town that don't get these opportunities. It's an amazing privilege. Not to say that your concerns aren't valid, but it is to say that we do have to recognize that we are one San Jose, the largest city in the Bay Area, and this is how we're going to get ourselves out of the housing crisis. And this is also how we're going to continue moving in the direction of being a worldwide epicenter, which I know we are and can be. So with that, I will now go ahead and call for the vote. All right, Bonia, yes. Casey?
Yes.
Caballero?
Yes.
Can show is absent. Garcia?
No.
Lord and law?
Yes.
Montagnes?
Yes.
Oliverio?
Yes.
Order de las vies?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
And with that, the motion passes with Cancho being absent and Garcia voting no. Okay, with that, we will now move on to item B, PP twenty-two dash zero zero two. With that, staff?
Thank you, Chair. Apurna Ankala.
Apurna, thank you.
With the policy and ordinance team, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Staff has a very brief presentation today.
Um, hey, Aparnit, just a second. Um, Chair, can, I thought we were going to go back to consent calendar, do you want to do that?
I will, I'll do it after this. Yeah, I'll do it after this. Thank you.
The item before you today is a proposed amendment to Title twenty of the San Jose Municipal Code, also known as the zoning code. Staff routinely updates. Staff routinely updates the zoning code to incorporate changes such as technical or formatting edits to ensure consistency. This proposed update will reinsert and re-adopt previous City Council approved changes that were inadvertently not published, partially published, or overlapped with the subsequent zoning code update for three specific items, and will also rectify one typographical error. Staff would like to note that no new changes or edits to the zoning code are proposed in this update. This update proposes to amend specific items in chapter twenty-point-three-zero residential zoning district, twenty-point-four-zero commercial zoning district, twenty-point-five-zero industrial zoning district, and twenty-point-seven-five pedestrian zoning district. Staff would also like to note that planning does not control publishing process or timelines. In order to eliminate future publishing omissions or errors, staff plans to proactively work with the third-party vendor to promptly correct any errors or omissions and also set up a centralized database of code updates for staff to closely monitor overlapping publishing timelines. Staff would like to note that file PP twenty dash oh oh nine was approved in May nineteen twenty twenty, and it amended several chapters in order to update the city's density bonus ordinance and to also implement the ministerial approvals. This update will reinsert the partially published text only in chapters twenty-point-three-zero, twenty-point-four-zero, and twenty-point-seven-five. Staff would also like to note that file PP twenty-one dash zero zero three was approved in December fourteen twenty twenty-one, and this was to extend the applicability of city density bonus initiatives. And this approval would also reinsert the text in chapters twenty-point-thirty-point-eight-forty. This is the Senate Bill changes, sorry about that.
That's okay.
And the next item, which is the item three, these are again amendments to general plan text approved in December twelfth twenty seventeen. And these would establish the criteria for commercial support. And the proposed changes only include changes to the section twenty-point-fifty-point-one-one-zero, which is to update the commercial support users. And staff would like to again reiterate that apart from these three sections, there are no other additional amendments involved with this update. This concludes the presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Aparna. We'll now take, do we have any public comment for this? Doesn't seem like we do. All right, seeing no public comment, hearing that there's no public comment, I'm gonna go ahead and move on then to commissioners. The floor is yours. Questions, motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion to approve, Alana Noah, second by Oliverio. All right, with that, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote. Bonia, yes. Casey?
Yes.
Caballero?
Yes.
Can show is absent. Garcia?
Yes.
Lord and law?
Yes.
Montagnes?
Yes.
Oliverio?
Yes.
Order de las vies?
Yes.
Torrance?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
All right, with that, the motion passes with Commissioner Cancho being absent. All right, so. Tell me when you're ready for us to go to the consent calendar conversation. Commissioner Oliverio?
Chair, I guess the question is, is if there's anyone to speak on the consent, any consent calendar items, and to take those speakers, I believe would be the next step.
Yeah, no, no, for sure, but I wanted to hear from council to clarify what it is that we're redoing here.
Okay, yeah, so well, let's clear up any confusion. So I think there was some confusion with respect to whether or not members of the public could pull items from consent. That's not something that they're necessarily entitled to do, but under the Brown Act, members of the public are permitted to comment on the entire consent calendar, at least, at least once. And my understanding was that individuals wanted to speak on the consent calendar, and they were not provided that opportunity to do so. So the way to cure that defect under the Brown Act is to revisit the items on consent, allow for public comment if anybody is still available to speak. And while we're at it, since we are revisiting those items, there was an abstention, Chair Bonia, by you with respect to the minutes. However, there are two other substantive items on there that you are required under the bylaws to vote on. So if you want to abstain from the minutes, you would need to handle that separately and abstain from that vote. Alternatively, you're not required to abstain from the minutes. Even though you weren't present at the meeting, you could still vote and approve the minutes.
Okay, that sounds perfect. Robert, was there anything on the, in the record that needed to be clarified, corrected?
Yes, so the lady, I think her name is Jill Borders. She indicated that there was a staff omission on the minutes, which had to do with a gentleman by name Andrew Matiota. They commented on the same issue or the same project that will be coming before you on June eighth. But I admit to staff error. We captured Jill Borders' comment but did not include Andrew Matiota. So that's what she pointed out in the letter that she sent. So we coordinated with City Attorney's Office, and Mike indicated that you can make that amendment and approve assets.
Okay, so we can make the amendment to the minutes to incorporate those comments?
That's correct. And that's the comment from Andrew Matiota.
Andrew Matiota.
Regarding the guest rent property.
All right, so we make a motion for that? Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Garcia, go ahead.
So while we're amending the minutes from last time, there was some question marks on the roll call, right? So to clarify for myself, I was absent at the five o'clock study session. I was present at the six-thirty planning meeting, and that's where there was some confusion there, that's probably why there's the question marks. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for that. And Commissioner Oliverio?
Uh, yes, Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes with the comments added by Robert Manford and the comments made by Commissioner Garcia.
So we have a second?
Second.
All right, second from Torrance. All right, so with that, we're gonna do four A. But first, we're gonna do the public comment, right, council? All right, so we'll go ahead and open a public comment.
That was on mute, yes, go ahead.
It's okay. All right, we'll open up the public comment, I think it's Jill Borders.
Thank you, yay, hi, I'm here, and I'm really grateful for all of you and your patience with me. And you, I just have a lot of faith in this system, a little more than I had at the beginning, and I am grateful to all of you for doing this. That was my comment, was going to be that, could we please make sure to include Andrew Mattiota's comments at the six-thirty meeting, which were omitted? So thank you for doing this. It really means a lot to me personally that we are taking the time to correct this error. And to all the people that I emailed and got responses back, thank you. To the people, the, you know, that have made this happen, it's, I appreciate it. So the second thing I wanted to comment on was on item B, and I'll just be really brief. So I received a mailer, you know, one of these mailers in the mail to let me know about a public hearing. And two comments is, one, we're spending a lot of money on these mailers, right? And it said, it said it was gonna be an item and that we could speak on it. But have, me having, knowing that it's on, looked at the thing, and it's on the consent calendar, that's why I sent something and said, hey, wait a minute, you've spent all this money to send this out to people in the public, and then you put it on the consent calendar, which chances are they're not gonna get to speak. So I asked them, would I have a chance to speak? And I was assured that, no, yes, you will. We allow people to speak on the entire consent calendar, and that didn't happen tonight, and that's okay. It's all learning, all lesson and learning. I know that that has changed. So my comment is that if we're gonna spend money, taxpayer money, to send these mailers out, we might want to already have it on the agenda where it's not on the consent calendar because people are expecting to come, and they don't know the rules. And they're gonna think that, you know, they're gonna be able to comment, and then as of course I wasn't, it's very frustrating. Since has been resolved, so it's fine. And in the interim, there's two hours that you guys, over two hours that you've served the public, and I'm grateful. I did my own research on this development and found out what, and type twenty-one ABC licenses, which I did not know before, and I'm quite comfortable with them selling off sale alcohol. So that's it, and thank you again very, very much.
Thank you, and thank you to our council for helping us untie the shoe that I'm convinced somehow I may have nodded myself to, so. With that, Commissioner Oliverio?
Oh, just a question for staff, Chair. Staff, I believe applicants pay the cost for the mailings of notifications, is that correct?
That's correct. It's all inclusive.
Want to clarify for the constituents, so thank you.
Perfect, all right, with that, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote on item four A, Bonia abstaining, who's absent? Casey?
Yes.
Caballero?
Yes.
Can show is absent. Garcia?
Yes.
Lord and law?
Yes.
Montagnes?
Yes.
Oliverio?
Yes.
Or Nellis Wise.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Motion passes with Commissioner Bonia abstaining and control absent. Perfect. Now get a motion to approve items for B and C.
No, moved.
Caballero with the motion, second.
Second.
Torrance. All right. Bonia, yes, Casey.
Yes.
Caballero.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Or the what?
Yes.
One thing, yes.
Yes.
Oliverio.
Yes.
Or Nellis Wise.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
And young motion passes with control being. Control being absent. I got you, Commissioner Young, we kind of.
I'm sorry, who is that? Was there a first and second on four A or that that name the same as? Before, which was Torrance first, Oliverio second.
No, four A was Laura Oliverio with the motion and second by Lord and what was it?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Casey. Did you have a question?
Yeah, Chair, I just wanted to make sure we weren't supposed to give public comments for the DNC. There's someone in the queue that has their hand up, just. Clarifying whether or not.
You know what? We'll go ahead and do some public comment. How about that? All right, do you have public comment items for B and C?
Back to us, please unmute yourself and identify yourself.
My name is Backtosh. Apologies, I didn't know that it was going to be approved as a package deal, but anyways. The business that regarding four C, it's located within a residential apartment building and the business applicant is in close proximity to other businesses currently selling. Beer and alcohol. Across the street from the apartment building or the business is. Our house is recovering from drug and alcohol addiction. One thing I wanted to point out for. Item four in the staff. I don't know what it's called, the staff memo. It says that approximately five point seven percent of the sales area would be. Used for sales of alcohol. I visited the store and it was well over fifty to sixty percent. Of the product of the store was filled with alcohol bottles. So the business has previously applied for a liquor license and was denied by the city. They've been illegally selling alcohol without a valid license. The business owner was told by the city code enforcement and alcoholic beverage control to see sales, but. Sales still continued. So I'm just asking if. The planning commission can help deny the application because of the lack of following the law and whatnot. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that. No more public comment. All right, without public comment is closed.
For sure. Oscar, please unmute.
Oh, okay.
Hi, my name is Oscar Lobos and I'm the assistant manager for the Chevron on Bird Avenue. And I disagree with with the plan because the plan will create more promise in the neighborhood for the residents and the business has by creating easier access to the hard alcohol. For homeless from the area. It is also too close to the low income building that houses many drug and alcohol recovery residents. And it's too close for the other businesses that are also still alcohol. And the business will create the crime rate, will increase the crime rate in the already high crime rate area. Where there's like no police officers patrolling right there and then when they're. When there's emergencies and they're called for emergencies, they show up late. If they show up and don't take the police reports. So just having the. Hard alcohol there in the neighborhood is just going to be even worse. I think.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none will now go to item seven. Referrals from city council boards, commissions for other agencies, staff. Are there any items here?
I don't have anything.
Okay, none. Well, now I move to item eight A, report from city council staff. Is there a report from city council?
There is, yeah. So. North San Jose went to council last Tuesday. The planning commission recommended the council approve a whole series of things, general plan amendments, changes to. The eight, the traffic impact fees, owning ordinance amendments to basically of retired North San Jose. For prod for new projects coming forward. The council went forward and approved the planning commission recommendation.
I'm glad they're taking notes.
They also approved a settlement with the city of Santa Clara.
There you go. Good. Glad they're taking notes from the planning commission. That's that's gratifying. All right, eight B, subcommittee formation reports and outstanding business.
I don't have anything is. I don't I, yeah, I don't have anything on that.
All right, seeing none. Eight C, commission calendar and study sessions.
I don't have anything to note on that either.
All right, with that, the public record. Commission Torrance.
Thank you, Chair. Is this where we share like happy news? Is that that part or is that later?
No, that's that's now that's now, but you I think you're going to beat me to the punch. So go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
What were you going to say?
Yes, I think maybe I wanted to take this moment to recognizing congratulate Commissioner Torrance. For finishing a very intensive program over at San Jose State University while also. Also being our colleague and also living life. It's quite an accomplishment. I think you're what, two or three days away from graduating?
Graduate tomorrow night, seven thirty P M.
Tomorrow tomorrow night, she graduates tomorrow night. Quite an accomplishment. Totally, totally. You've been a great addition to this team. That spirit. And that spirit to continue growing is inspiring as well, not just for me personally, but for those that are watching as well. So congratulations. Really happy for you and that's what I wanted to say, but.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm not going anywhere. I get to be a person on the planning commission. In the starting in July, so I'm I'm here. I'm here for it. So thank you very much.
Right on. Right on. Was that what you were going to say?
Yeah, yeah. I was going to congratulate myself. I was just going to tell you what I've been doing for a year.
Yeah, I wanted I wanted to share it for sure. Any any other public record? All right, with that, my friends, have a great night. See you next one.
See you later.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody.